Thanks, everyone. Calling this Board of Education meeting to order back in open session Thursday, September 16th, 2021. Item 2.0, Announcement and Public Comment Regarding... Oh, I'm sorry. We are... 4.0. Call back to order. Pledge of Allegiance. 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance. Superintendent?
Thank you. Ready? Salute. Pledge of Allegiance. Apply to the United States of America. And to the Republic which is one nation, together, in this...
All right. Thank you. Student Board Members, Zhang. Are you ready for 4.2, our broadcast statement, please?
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, September 19th at 8:00 p.m. and Monday, September 20th at noon. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments which are posted on our website or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting submitted a speaker form by noon today and were sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda.
Thank you very much. So, 4.3, our stellar student, and it is my pleasure to be able to introduce our stellar student. Do we have them on the line? Our stellar student today is Paris Reyes. Paris is an eighth-grade student from San Brandon Middle School. Paris was nominated by her program manager, Keisha Rivera Robinson, for her exceptional resiliency and growth mindset demonstrated over the course of the year from her participation in Learning Hubs through summer programming. Paris continues to participate in after-school programming at San Brandon, and Keisha shared that she has blossomed out of her shell into a happy, funny, and friendly student that enjoys helping others and participating in all the activities. She is committed to working hard at her academics and gets well... Gets along well with others. Well, we'd like to celebrate Paris today. Is Paris on the line?
I do see that Paris is on the line. Paris, can you join us?
Hello, Paris?
Hi, this is Keisha. She was having some issues with... They were having issues with their computer. So she may be on here, but I don't know if she's able to hear us completely.
Oh.
Her mom's on here also, though. So Maria, do you hear us? Yeah, I think they're having some issues, unfortunately.
That's okay. So Maria, we're not hearing you. Oh. Might be connecting. Let's just give it a moment. Well, why don't I let... Keisha, do you want to say a couple words while we're waiting to see if she can connect?
Sure. Um... Paris is just a great overall student. She came to us in the hub. She was a little shy. Like, for example, I didn't even know she had braces, like... Also, taking our mask break, I didn't, like... She would take her mask break, but she never really talked or laughed or anything like that. And it was further along during the hub where I real... I was like, "Oh, you have braces?" So it's... That's how shy she was. Like, we never even knew that she has braces. But she's a good, helpful kid, you know, who's trying to focus on her grades and doing better, becoming social with other students. And I think the hub helped her a lot. And it's just great to watch her, like, from seeing where she was to where she is now. So that's why I nominated her for this award, though.
Oh. Well, thank you so much, Keisha, for those kind words and for nominating Paris. I think it's so wonderful when we can celebrate the growth of our students. That is the thing that means the most to me, is, you know, and all of that... You know, that growth is because of what you and every one of our staff and contract after-school program folk, what all of you put into our students. So I just appreciate the work you do. Paris, wonderful job. Can you hear us? Okay. Well, I think they're having difficulty connecting. But Maria, keep up the good work. Paris, you're doing a great job. We're very proud of you. Give her a round of applause.
Good job, Paris.
Thanks so much. Okay. We'll move on to item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session. Ms. Collins, do we have any announcements?
Yes, Vice President Murawski, there are three announcements, and the superintendent will start, or you can start with yours.
Sure, I'll let the superintendent go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Murawski. I do have two announcements. I am very pleased to announce that the board approved the following appointments. First, by unanimous vote of six to zero, with Board Member Phillips absent, the board approved the appointment of Tuan Duong as Instructional Assistant Superintendent. Congratulations, Mr. Duong. Second, by unanimous vote of six to zero with Board Member Phillips absent, the board approved the appointment of Ms. April Shafto as Instructional Assistant Superintendent. Congratulations, Ms. Shafto.
Wonderful announcements, and congratulations to our newest Instructional Assistant Superintendent. I have one announcement. I want to announce that, consistent with the terms of our current superintendent agreement, the board today directed staff to reset the superintendent's salary, consistent with the terms of the agreement dated May 4th, 2017, and make any retroactive salary payments due under the agreement to the superintendent regarding a positive evaluation for the 2019-20 school year. So just a bit of settle-up. Corrections to staff are not required to be reported out of closed session, but we wanted to just ensure there was a clear record. These directives resolve the superintendent's deferral of the required salary increase after receiving a positive evaluation for the 2019-20 school year. This does not relate to the superintendent's positive evaluation for the 2020-2021 school year. So there were no changes made to the current superintendent agreement. Any changes made to the superintendent agreement will be made in open session at a regular board meeting as required by the Brown Act. Thank you very much. I believe that wraps up our closed-session announcements? Yes?
Yes, it does. That's all.
Great, thank you. All right, item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. I'd request a motion to adopt the agenda. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Thank you. Let's move on to 7.0, Public Comment. Ms. Ann Moretti, how many public comments do we have for 7.0?
We have 20 submitted to speak live.
20 live public comments? Okay. Without objection, I would ask that we limit comments to one minute apiece. We have 15 minutes allocated for public comment. This would take it to 20 minutes, but we would give everyone an opportunity to speak. So with that, Ann, if you can just ensure that our public commenters know that we're doing public comment for one minute.
Yes, will do.
Thank you.
Our first public comment is from Beth Hearn. Ms. Hearn, you have one minute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Since I have one minute, I'll try and just go quickly here. So, school started two weeks ago, and my child hasn't received a single minute of instruction. He has no teacher. He has no curriculum. He has no materials. He has no access to his school community. The students that enrolled in independent studies are not being provided with any education at all, and it's just due entirely to poor planning. We have the technology. We have the capability to provide an online education, and instead we're pushing kids into these independent study programs without any apparent care for their actual access to an education. So after being bounced back and forth between the school and the independent study program for the past couple weeks, I can't help but feel that the district's only concern is making sure they're receiving their ADA funding for my child, who's receiving nothing for the funds that he's bringing in. We need an online program to help kids stay connected to their schools. Based on what I'm seeing from the outbreaks and the need for quarantine already, it's not just these independent study children who are going to be spending time away from their classroom this year. So we have to step up and plan accordingly. Other districts have...
Thank you, Ms. Hearn.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is EJ Solis, and you have one minute.
Thank you for the opportunity to voice my comments amongst you all on this fine evening. I'm going to go ahead and concur with the first commenter with regards to independent studies. We have two children in the district, age grade five and freshman. I wanted to talk to you really about the notification process as it relates to the COVID testing and everything else. At John F. Kennedy, the numbers are rising there where my son goes to. I have been keeping him home for the last few days after he was tested due to exposure from a classmate. Now, one thing about this program is that us parents, we are not notified at all to even have known that our student was even at risk in the first place on there. So that needs to change absolutely as a policy whatsoever. My son was also advising that, due to, in his basic experiences, he's seen lots of masks on the chin, lots of closed doors, lots of windows that are closed that are purportedly supposed to have been opened based on all the presentations that you provided for assurance prior to the start of the year. We must explore an opportunity for online learning.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ellen Yin Wykoff. Ms. Yin Wykoff, you have one minute.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Board Members. My name is Ellen Yin Wykoff. I have a 12-year-old daughter at Cap City. Again, I share the similar concerns like other parents in terms of my daughter has been enrolled, and since school has started on September 2nd, she's only received a total of two and a half hours of instruction from the Cap City, no other assignments, except for today. She got one page of work that was equal to 20 minutes of her time. So I'm just very concerned that we are not given what's required by law, an equitable and comparable education, and given the appropriate opportunities. I know Cap City is still getting up fully staffed and running, certainly appreciate this, but it's really important that I feel like our... My daughter, along with many other students at Cap City, are really being penalized for making this decision to opt into independent study. This is not appropriate, and our kids deserve better. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next comment, please.
Our next speaker is Erin Goddess.
Hi there. I have two kids at Sutterville. My son, Mason, has type 1 diabetes and severe asthma. At school, he has contracted several common colds, four of which have landed him in the PICU for a week at a time, struggling to breathe, fighting DKA and secondary infections like pneumonia. If you've never held your child down for an IV or watched them struggle to breathe as their chest retracts, consider yourself lucky. Pre-pandemic, his teachers have gone to great efforts to keep him healthy, including frequent cleaning, hand sanitizing, and parents just letting me know if their child had cold symptoms so we could keep him home. His teachers have been nothing short of superheroes, and our entire family has made huge sacrifices. The district has been inefficient with providing independent studies to families like ours. Mason often shows signs of stress and feels like he's being left behind. I have to assure him that it's adults that have filled him in this situation and not something he's done. We still don't even know if they can go back to their gate cohorts that they've been a part of. The district plan for notifying parents and contact tracing is not good enough for kids like Mason, disabled children that will suffer greatly. As a family with a disabled child, we are not privileged to just send our kids to school and hope they don't get sick. Please use any funds that were allocated for COVID-19 to increase testing, improve contract tracing, provide teachers with the means to keep our kids safe. Even superhero teachers cannot outrun deadly viruses.
Thank you, Ms. Goddess.
Our next speaker is Ingrid Hutchins. Ms. Hutchins, you have one minute.
Thank you. I'm combining my time with Alan Fox. So can I have two minutes then?
Two minutes on the clock?
Yeah. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, good evening. We have been in school for 10 days now. It has been exhausting, but not in our normal beginning-of-the-year way. We've started our third year of pandemic teaching, and this time we have full in-person classes. This is not a normal school year. We need the district to understand this. If you haven't been tasked with keeping 24 to 33 children healthy during a dangerous surge from a new variant, you'll have a difficult time imagining what it takes, how it stresses you, worries you, affects the pace of your instructional day. We are no longer tasked with just being educators. Our students are potentially exposed to a deadly virus daily, and we are the ones who have to... Or who are doing everything in our power to keep them well. We also need to help them with the trauma that the pandemic has caused. However, we have not been given enough tools to keep them safe and to support their mental and emotional health. I worry whenever a student is absent. Today, I had five. This week, we also had three new COVID cases on campus. You can imagine how worried I am about my absent students and their families. The contact tracing protocol does not take a lot into account, like being maskless while eating a snack or drinking water at recess, or whose mask falls down on a regular basis. Teachers could give you that information, but we're not told who is testing positive. We just know that someone did. So much valuable information that could help protect students, their families, and our communities as a whole is being ignored because teachers, once again, aren't trusted or included in the process. I find it funny that we're regularly kept out of these important matters, even though we're the ones closest to our students and families. If you want to know how something will affect students' classrooms or their learning, you need to ask your teachers. If you want to know how something will affect our schedules and daily processes, ask your principals. If you want to know how something will affect the buildings, materials, and equipment, ask your plant managers and custodians. Treat us all as the professionals we are. You'd be amazed at how our district could be run if you utilized our expertise. A lot of what's going wrong right now, from holes in contact tracing to the egregious delay in starting AB 130 independent study, stems from the way the district treats their employees.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hutchins.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Baker. Ms. Baker, you have one minute.
Ms. Baker, if you're speaking, you may be on mute.
Got it. Sorry. Thank you. My child has now gone two and a half weeks without the minimal daily synchronous instruction as mandated by AB 130. No curriculum, no teacher, and no word from the district as to the exact date when I can expect her opportunity to receive her education this year. I'm deeply disappointed with the lack of concern and the level of complicity that I've seen by this board and our district's leadership. I would expect this disinterest and lack of parental concerns from a district in Texas or Florida, but not in my own backyard. The lack of responsiveness from this district, coupled with the lack of support being provided to serve the significant amount of new students to the independent studies program, as well as ensuring the students who were already participants of that program remain served, truly shows no concern for closing the COVID gap nor for providing a quality education for all of our students. Your continued lack of action through the absence of an agenda item for addressing this, as well as to address the gap being created each week by the lack of instruction, is creating a tide of more engaged and enraged parents. I implore you not to dismiss us or hope we will go away, but to recognize your role in the denial of a public education to our children and to create an accountable and transparent way to address the situation you have created.
Thank you.
There's still time to fix it. Please give me a reason to believe in your leadership again.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker is Jody Bone. Ms. Bone, you have one minute.
Good evening. I am a teacher in the Sacramento City Unified School District. 10 days into the opening of most Sacramento City schools, COVID-positive test cases are beginning to pop up at most school sites. Office staff, principals, teachers, classified staff, and nurses aides are working hard to keep students safe and happy at school, in addition to help with quarantine and isolation protocols. As this is a learning process for all, I would like to share, from my experience, a thought from... To change the availability of testing at the site care rooms and at the CERNAS Center. Testing at the CERNAS Center is available from 12 to 3:30 p.m. and at school sites during school hours. A positive test in my classroom was reported to be yesterday at 3:30 p.m. I found a pharmacy open with rapid testing available yesterday evening for which I paid out of pocket. I did a PCR test at school this morning. I propose having testing available at a few sites throughout the district that remain open into the evening to accommodate staff and students. I also encourage contact tracers to be trained to search an infinite campus by address, as well as by student, as many of our students live in multifamily homes. In closing, I encourage the board to follow the lead of the Culver City and Los Angeles Unified School Districts to take on the leadership role in Northern California by requiring testing for all students and vaccinations for students throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bone. That is an agenda item 8.4, if you want to stick around.
Our next speaker is Justine Hearn. Ms. Hearn, you have one minute.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Justine Hearn, and I'm a parent in the district. We're approaching the end of our third week in the independent study program, and we still don't have an assigned teacher to us or a timeline for what to expect. Why aren't our long-term independent study kids just as much of a priority as other students? The missteps with this program have been well documented, shared at board meetings, and highlighted in the media as recently as today. Looking ahead, though, what are the next steps? We're looking forward to going back in person, but in the meantime, we've been left high and dry, cobbling together curriculum for our kids. To that point, I realize my next comment applies to item 8.4 tonight, but I need to spend the rest of my evening putting together materials and a lesson plan for my third grader tomorrow. That is reality, so I'll address it now. We've asked at several board meetings about mandatory, regular testing for everyone on campus regardless of their vaccine status, and at each meeting, it seems there's interest in this. I hope we can learn from the school districts in Los Angeles, Santa Barbara, and Culver City who are now requiring us and follow their lead.
Thank you.
Along with consistent contact tracing, this will go a long way toward making our schools safe, particularly elementary schools where vaccines are not available for that age group, and getting families like mine back into the classroom where we want to be. I just want to say too, thank you to Trustee Rhodes for being out there, helping at the independent study enrollment center at Cap City this week. We appreciated... My husband met with you, and you helped him register our son. Thanks so much for being out there and showing up for our kids.
Thank you. Thank you for the shout-out. Next comment, please.
Our next speaker is Lisa Cordos, and you have one minute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I have a high schooler who is vaccinated, and he is on campus. I have to trust all of the processes put in place to keep him as safe as possible. And what I'm noticing that is starting to happen is that quarantine calls are starting. Kids are getting COVID, and regardless of his vaccinated status, he is still going to have to quarantine when the time comes. And statistics show us that it's all coming very soon. We're all going to be affected one way or another. And this is where I get really upset at the independent study program or lack of independent study program.
Thank you, Lisa. Can you please wrap up your comment, please?
Yeah. It's atrocious to me that this process has not started, that you've got students, over 1,000 students, waiting for instruction, and you're being paid for them. Please do your job.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Reynoso. Ms. Reynoso, you have one minute.
Good evening. SAC City has a concapping problem. Why do we have to wait 15 full days to find permanent placements for all our students? The classes that are overflowing are suffering. Many students don't have desks or books. Teachers are ready to dive into content but are juggling extra students they know will be elsewhere in a week or two. Why are we waiting to place these kids? Under-enrolled teachers are waiting for their classes to fill, knowing they will have to reteach procedures to a new batch of students, or they live in terror that they could lose their class, or worse, be forced to leave their current school. Please devise and implement a better plan. Next week, I dread that SCUSD will be making some poor decisions that will add to the stress, suffering, and inequality, and I'm also anxious that these decisions could affect the physical health of our youngest ones due to the rampant spread of COVID. During leveling...
Please wrap up your comment.
I was just going to say that I really wish that the leveling could happen fairly for our kids.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Johnson. Ms. Johnson, you have one minute.
Hi, Michelle Johnson. I have a son at New Joseph Bonheim and a daughter at Phoebe Hurst. We're currently waiting for a teacher assignment at Cap City School. I didn't want to send my kids to school this year, but Bonheim started before any independent program had begun, and after the month at Bonheim, with all the erratic notifications and quarantines and being in and out of school, we'd had enough. The information and signup process for independent studies has been so jarring and without clarity. I learned on Facebook about the informational Zoom meeting six hours before the meeting. This also required the same day signup for this independent study or to show up for class the next day. I sent it to my son and my daughter, who had been waiting two years for her placement at Phoebe Hurst, which we had finally won, so the decision to keep her out was painful for us. But after a month at NJB, how could I send her in? Teachers at the kids' school were required to produce two weeks of work overnight to the independent study students, and I found out about it before they did, when it was announced at the information meeting. I did eventually receive a photocall busy work packet from Cap City School, which is not good enough, but I understand. Daryl Amerin and his staff have the unreal task of hiring enough teachers for 1,700 students in two weeks, and they're absolutely doing their best.
Thank you, Michelle. Great comment.
Our next speaker is Mo Kashmiri.
Hello, my name is Allison Law. I'm speaking in place of Mo Kashmiri. Can you hear me?
They can hear me.
You know...
Hello?
Yeah, we can. It's cutting it in and out a bit.
Well, I'll try. I am an office staff at John F. Kennedy High School. Last Thursday, we were told that our office staff had to start contact tracing. We don't contact for the COVID case or the students that are close contacts of the COVID case, which means that we are contact tracing for 30 to 50 students per COVID case. Just within the last two days, we had three COVID cases, which means that our office staff had to send out over 100 emails just today. We don't have enough time for that. We're struggling. We're not medically trained. We're having to give out medical advice to our students and their families. How many other schools are giving... Are having to contact trace, and they don't have time? and they don't have time to contact the families? Our families are not being contacted to let them know that they had a close contact. Their student had a close contact.
Thank you so much. Could you please wrap up your comment?
We don't even have a school nurse assigned to our our school and we have over two thousand students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Samantha Benton. Ms. Benton, you have one minute to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name's Samantha. I have a fourth grader and a seventh grader in the district. I have a couple of things that I wanted to ask about. One is about the COVID dashboard. I've seen that San Juan updates theirs three times a day and I definitely see the value in getting more real-time data and wanted to see if ours could be updated daily instead of twice a week. Another question I have is whether we can initiate mandatory testing. I know that that's on the discussion tonight. At least weekly, I'm an ICU nurse in our community and hospital beds are at capacity. Pediatric beds are very limited. I've seen a huge increase in COVID numbers and I feel that the stress and disruption of quarantines can be very difficult for families and students. It would really seem to make sense to see if someone is positive for COVID before putting them in a room full of people for hours. Lastly, I feel that our independent study program is not adequate or equitable for students. My daughter gets three hours, one day a week of Zoom instruction, and then she's on her own. She's gotten one math assignment a week that takes her twenty minutes to do. I know another option was being looked at earlier and I really feel we could work harder to find a better option for our kids, one that could also be used by the hundreds of kids that are in quarantine.
Thank you, Samantha.
Our next speaker is Sarah Bailey. Ms. Bailey, you have one minute.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, great. I am a classified employee. I work in a special day classroom as an instructional aide. So I'm seeing firsthand that families are being forced to make decisions that are not right for them or their children because there simply does not have, there is no other choice for them. It's really clear, really, really clear that these families have not been considered in any meaningful way. This is a matter of access and equity. All of our families, including students with IEPs, have a right to an education and they have a right to a safe alternative to in-person learning. Board members, it is your job to hold superintendent Aguilar accountable for this colossal failure. It is not your job to express outrage at SCTA in board meetings. It is not your job to tell us how hard this process has been. Ringing of hands is not helpful. It is your job to take ownership when you have fallen short so that you can do better. Thank you, trustee Phillips, for being the example of how to do this without defensiveness or deflection. Board members, it is your job to listen to us as the community that you serve and it is our job as community members to hold you all accountable with our votes if you fail to do so.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
Our next speaker is Shonda Wesley. Ms. Wesley, you have one minute to speak.
Hi, my name is Shonda Wesley. I'm a parent in the district. One thing I've learned in my line of work is that the person who controls the agenda controls the message. Clearly, the issue of independent studies has fallen off, something the district has moved on from, but many families haven't. Assembly Bill 130 requires our kids receive minimum synchronous instruction. Since the district wasn't prepared, over one thousand children have not received a minute of synchronous instruction and it's day twelve. Further, kids with IEPs have no timeline in sight for when they will. It's unacceptable for the district to penalize IEP students by denying or delaying their education as their families are choosing independent study for their students' health and safety needs right now. It is also unacceptable for the district to continue to receive the funding for the students who are also not receiving any instruction while they're waiting in limbo to be accepted into independent study. How will the school district make up for the weeks of instruction our children did not receive due to the district's lack of planning? And before I go, I just wanted to thank Cap City principal Amerin and his staff for doing an amazing job with very little support that they have gotten from this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Shonda.
Our next speaker is Steph Rodriguez.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
So as a mother to a first grade student now enrolled with Cap City's independent study program, which still remains to be seen, I'm tired and stressed and angry, but I'm not going anywhere. So now we're two and a half weeks into the school year. And then today I went and picked up a couple of work packets at Cap, at the Cap City campus. I was told that one packet needs a math book. But of course, the math books weren't sent to Cap City, so I guess I'll just ignore those sections until there is a teacher hired to teach first grade. And yet, there's still no answer as to when that will be. In fact, independent study seems to be so far removed from this board's priorities since it's not even an agenda item listed tonight. In the end, the district disenfranchised more than a thousand students who had an interest in online independent study by not having its act together and preparing for this need. That is crystal clear. And no amount of head shaking will hide that from the incompetence on display every day. These kids go without a teacher, a real curriculum, and a district that truly values our education.
Thank you very much, Steph.
Our final speaker that is online is Terrence Gladney.
Good evening, everyone. Just only have a minute. I'll do what far too few in the district are willing to do or have historically done. I want to thank San Brennan Middle School. Thank Mr. Flores. Thank Ms. Keisha for uplifting that student and her greatness. They do so much with so little. They're often forgotten in their own trustee area because they sit on the edge of Area Six and Area One and they aren't connected to the Lampport Corps. So I hope that everyone online will listen. If you have questions, if you have a sixth grader or below, go have a conversation with Mr. Flores. I have had so many students or families that have heard all of the false narratives about the school that have talked to Mr. Flores and have enrolled their students there and have had the best time. He is a great principal. He is a great man. He lives in the neighborhood. He uplifts his neighborhood school like I wish more people did and I wish our board did. So thank you, Mr. Flores, and thank you, San Brennan. Go Wolf.
Thank you. Thank you, Terrence. Couldn't agree more about San Brennan. Thank you so much. Okay, and I believe that wraps up our public comment seven point O. I did want to give the superintendent Aguilar just a moment to address some of the comments around independent study and perhaps a brief update on current effort.
Thank you very much, Vice President Murawski. I just want to indicate, of course, that I don't take any of these public comments lightly. These are parents that are describing to us their frustrations and their anger. Certainly, my expectation is that there is not a student that has not received learning packets during the short-term period or the short-term independent study period and that we will continue to try to make the improvements necessary of the independent study program that we envisioned from the very beginning. That may not be all possible in short order, but as we continue to monitor the independent study program, the staffing needs there, we are going to do everything we can to support our families. I too do want to thank member Rhodes, who earlier this week in a conversation mentioned that he had been there to support our families as well. We are going to do everything that we can to make sure that we have the necessary support for our students in terms of additional counseling, additional administrative support as well to try to ease the transition from from for this program that that our parents, of course, and our students deserve. So I certainly will have the expectation that our that our families at least have access to the learning packet during this short-term independent study period.
Thank you very much. Our our families deserve just the same education as they can get in our school. So we appreciate that and we'll look forward to future updates and more very, very hard work on this on this talk. Moving on to eight point O, special presentation, eight point one resolution, recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month. I'd like to welcome Ms. Olga Sims.
Hi, students. Could you please turn on your your cameras? Good evening, Board President Pritchett, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board. It is an honor to introduce three sixth-grade scholars representing Peter Burnett Elementary. Our scholars are joining me in the presentation of the Hispanic Heritage Month Resolution that was enacted into law on August seventeenth, nineteen eighty-eight. Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the rich, the rich histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, Central and South America. In Sacramento City Unified School District, our students represent over forty percent of the student population. So today, Alfonso Tevez Daza, Annie Poon, and Isabel Guerrero will read parts of the resolution to acknowledge and honor our past, present, and future. Today serves as a reminder that standing together, we are stronger.
Whereas the first National Hispanic Heritage Month originated in nineteen sixty-eight and begins on September fifteenth to coincide with the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, Chile, and Belize. Also celebrate their Independence Days during this period and-
Whereas Sacramento City Unified School District serves more than seventeen thousand Hispanic students or about forty percent of the student population. And whereas two hundred sixty-two students have received a Spanish language up by literacy through the multilingual literacy department in Sacramento City Unified School District in the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one school year. And whereas Sacramento City Unified School District is committed to improving the academic and social emotional outcomes for the English language learners and all students in the district and-
Whereas the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the positive influence that Hispanics have on our country and in our community through their commitment, through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, and commends the many local community organizations that support their progress and restore their culture and celebrate the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of the Hispanic communities.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified Board of Education declares September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one as National Hispanic Heritage Month, recognizes the contributions of local Hispanic leaders, district staff, students, and their families. And thank you for your attention and thank you, scholars, for your commitment to your education. And now we pass it back to you, board.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sims. Thank you, Alfonso, Annie, and Isabel. That was a lovely presentation. We really appreciate it. Do we have any public comment for this item?
We do. We have one public comment from Terrence Gladney.
Go ahead, Terrence.
Good evening again. I know the power of, you know, of Latino heritage and, and, you know, I mean, they were here before any of us other than indigenous people. When I think about my son's experience in his Spanish class, he took Spanish for three years and my daughter takes French and she speaks more Spanish than he does because I don't believe there's enough rigor. I probably learned more in eighth grade Spanish in the Bay Area than I did, than my son did his whole three years. We're really going to honor the culture and language of ethnic populations and we really need to push that it's just as present as Eurocentric curriculum. We can, we can develop an ethnic studies program that covers multiple ethnicities and races, but yet the core of our system is Eurocentric. That's not honoring anything other than Eurocentricity. So if we're really going to have these resolutions, you know, I mean, you guys' own statement says systems are built to create the outcomes, you know, that they're designed for. So change the system and move beyond this resolution and grow and push a little bit further than that.
Thank you so much for that comment. Any comments from board members? Member Garcia?
I just wanted to thank staff and the students for bringing this resolution forward. I think it's really important to take a moment and celebrate the heritage and all the contributions of so many of of our students here in Sacramento City Unified. So, you know, someone who's who's of Mexican descent, I I just really take this opportunity to just reflect and not contributions from my gente, you know? So so just thank you. I really liked that the students came to read. So I just wanted to thank staff and the students for being here.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, well, thank you again, Ms. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Just looking at the the little lights over here. Member Phillips, go, go right ahead.
Sorry about that. I am really excited that we have this resolution. One thing that does concern me, not with the resolution at all, fantastic, is that little part where it's like, when do we throw money at? How we make this work? You know what I mean? I understand it's a celebration. It can be a celebration in our hearts, celebration in our minds. But in order to change the system that we are currently working with, it's going to take funding. So I think I I I kind of just want to make sure that we understand that a lot of our resolutions come through, but there's nothing that will propel them into the future. And I want to make sure that we are doing as much as we can to fund projects that could easily be started through these resolutions. So the more we can do, the better these resolutions will be in their their impact.
Thank you very much, Member. Oh, thank you very much, Member Phillips. And yes, and just to just want to echo my fellow board members in in supporting kind of accountability through our LCAP and in looking at our Latino Hispanic students as a population and ensuring that we do all we can to look for better outcomes for them as well. With that, I will take a motion. Okay, do we need a roll call on this resolution? Superintendent, can you please call roll?
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Wonderful. And our student board member Zhang? Okay. Thank you very much, board members. With that, we'll move on to eight point two, our resolution on college savings account. And welcome Ms. Christina Espinoza to present that. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar, board member, President Pritchett's not present today, but a member of the board. My name is Christina Espinoza and I serve as the Director of College and Career Readiness. I, along with Member Garcia, would like to bring forward a resolution this evening recognizing September as College Savings Month. So as you know, counselors put forth a tremendous amount of work and effort each year supporting students and families with the college matriculation process. But but as we all know, financing a college education is oftentimes difficult for many of our families. And this is, in many cases, the reason why students do not enroll in college. So for this reason, we have spent a lot of time and energy over the last few years sponsoring FAFSA workshops across all of our sites. We provide one-on-one assistance in the after-school space in the evenings on weekends. We partnered with a variety of college access partners or youth development department to provide additional workshops in the evenings. So all of these efforts have resulted in in our district seeing nearly twenty-seven percentage point growth since two thousand sixteen. So, you know, when when I came on board, we had about forty-seven percent FAFSA completion rate. And over the last few years, through the hard work of all of our teams, we grew to about seventy-four percent in two thousand twenty. That was our last year. Last year, like many districts in the nation and the state, we saw a pretty big decrease. So we ended the year at about fifty-nine percent of students submitting a FAFSA, which is still higher or close to the county rate, but it's still much lower than we would have wanted to see. So although this aligns with the state and national trends, we are not satisfied with that and we are currently in the process of scheduling FAFSA workshops across all of our school sites and partnering with, again, our college access partners and the California Student Aid Commission and CalSO so that we expand the number of workshops that we're offering. and CalSO, so that we expand the number of workshops that we're offering to students this year. Fortunately, we're in space again, so we'll be able to provide more one-on-one contacts with those students and supporting them. And we're also expanding the financial literacy workshops in grade six through twelve through our CCGI platform. So we're really excited about that this year. And we plan on, you know, talking about the college savings accounts beginning in kinder this year. So we're going to make a concerted effort to expand the communication and get this information in the hands of our younger students and families. So with that said, we believe that the early awareness and education is critical for post-secondary attainment, and Member Garcia is going to help us by reading aloud the resolution in support of the college savings account.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Member Garcia.
Thank you. So I won't read the entire resolution, but Christina, I'm just really excited that this resolution is before the Board. I know I've been trying to get this, you know, before the Board for a few years, but then in between, we have COVID, right? So it just kind of put a pause on a few things. So just very briefly, September, this resolution recognizes September as College Savings Month. It's really to bring awareness of the, about the five twenty-nine college savings plans that provide long-term savings or investment accounts to help children and their families save for the future, especially for post-secondary education. We know that the cost of college is high, and it continues to escalate. So these college savings accounts is one way to be able to, you know, address some of the cost that we will see. Whereas the ScholarShare five twenty-nine college savings plans, which had served California's official state-sponsored five twenty-nine college savings plan since its launch in nineteen ninety-nine, has seen more than eleven billion dollars in total plan assets held over three hundred and fifty thousand ScholarShare five twenty-nine accounts. Whereas the ScholarShare five twenty-nine Scholar Savings Plan has helped students meet their higher educational goals with over five hundred and fifty million withdrawn in two thousand and twenty for qualified higher education expenses and funds distributed directly to over one thousand fifty-eight colleges and universities. These college savings accounts are becoming more and more popular. And then, whereas studies have shown that even children with college savings account of less than five hundred dollars are three times more likely to enroll in higher education and four times more likely to graduate than those without a college savings account. Whereas ScholarShare five twenty-nine, California state-sponsored five twenty-nine college savings plan is offering the matching grant program to families with children fourteen years of age or younger with a dollar for dollar matching grant of up to two hundred dollars to help kickstart the college planning process. And now, therefore be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District is committing to reducing racial inequities and opportunity gaps and educational attainment by doing the following. Working with the California ScholarShare Investment Board to establish a partnership and share ScholarShare five twenty-nine resources beginning this year in two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two, as Christina described. Communicating the matching grant program resources to eligible families with children in pre-K through eighth grade via the annual enrollment packets, webinars, district social media platforms, and after-school programs. And communicating to district employees of the benefits of five twenty-nine college savings plans. These are plans that can be offered, employees can opt into them. These are free tax dollars that they can contribute to. And lastly, communicating to our family the relationship between saving for college and its alignment to the LCAP goal number one, college and career readiness, which states a hundred percent of Sac City Unified School District students will graduate college and career-ready with a wide array of post-secondary options and a clear post-secondary plan. Growth and graduation rate in college and career readiness will be accelerated for students with disabilities, English learners, African-American students, African Indian, American Indian, or Alaska Native students, Hispanic-Latino students, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander students, foster youth, homeless youth, and other student groups with gaps, with gaps in outcomes until gaps are eliminated. And there is a resolution. Again, I just want to thank staff for taking the time to putting this together in really short notice and really allowing us to recognize September as College Savings Month.
Thank you very much, Member Garcia.
I did want to share just a personal note. You know, I recently pulled out this red folder, and if you can see, it has loans on here, LaTisha School Loans. And on the inside, I have written how much I owed back in two thousand and one. I owed thirty-five thousand dollars just to earn my bachelor's degree. A couple of years later, I got into additional debt. And, you know, after I earned my master's degree, I was in debt for fifty thousand dollars. I knew that as the eldest of eight and the first one in my family to go to college, loans was the only way that I can attain college. So to bring this opportunity to our families so that their children don't have to go through what I went through, just really warms my heart. And I'm just really proud of this resolution. I'm excited to see it implemented. This is really going to lay the infrastructure for what comes next, which means that next year, we have the opportunity to really take advantage of this year's big investment in the state budget. The governor and the legislature provide one point nine billion dollars for this to open, you know, college savings accounts to all current low-income kids in grades first to twelfth grade. And then that's a seed accounts for five hundred million dollars and for homeless and foster kids. That amount can go up to a thousand dollars. So it's really starting now to really establish the infrastructure so that we can help our families really access these dollars that are so sorely needed. So with that, I just wanted to, you know, allow for others to comment and maybe move the resolution when it's appropriate.
Okay, we will hold off on board discussion for just a moment and make sure we have any public comment on this item?
No, there's no public comment on this item.
Okay. Well, with that, I will open it up for board discussion. Just want to echo Member Garcia, and what an amazing investment in our youth. A great opportunity and just incredible to know that even a very small college savings account has such a big impact on college going. It's really about creating that culture of college going so that we want for all of our students to have the opportunity, recognizing there's many pathways to, you know, academic and life success. Any of my fellow Board members wish to make a comment on this? Move it. Okay. I have a motion... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Murawski. I just want to echo a bit of what Member Garcia mentioned. We know that while we have increased our FAFSA application rates, that's far too late to be thinking about the importance of figuring out how one is going to pursue post-secondary education and the extent to which your options might be limited in terms of the perceptions you have about debt. And certainly for many of our students and many of our families, that is not fully understood. So it's never too early to think about this. What I will be doing with our staff is determining whether there is a way in which we already have or we can enhance some modules for our parents through the face department that relates specifically to the importance of thinking about savings for this resolution. And I will report back to the Board. I think that we could easily think about how we might create a module on this topic for all of our families regardless of age, regardless of the age of their students, and starting as early as early learning, of course. And so I will report back to the Board as to where we're at in terms of thinking about how we can work with our parents directly so that they understand the value of this. We know that we have to be sensitive because this is a, this is a community, of course, where we have a lot of hardships. But nevertheless, we know that these are savings that accrue interest over time and can be used for educational expenses. And that interest does not have any tax liabilities. And so it is, of course, important to understand those concepts. And for many of our families and community members, those are not opportunities that they have had in the past. And so we've got to do everything we can to find ways to communicate that to them. So I will report back to the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Aguilar. And there is, you know, a little bit of action connected to this resolution. So appreciate that. Okay, with that, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, motion and a second. Superintendent, can you please call roll?
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That resolution passes. Eight point three, our resolution on recognition of National Suicide Prevention Month. Would love to welcome Victoria Flores to the floor. Many really, really, really important resolutions tonight. Appreciate this one particularly. Victoria, can you go ahead, please?
Yes. Good evening, Vice President Murawski, Superintendent, and members of the Board. We are here tonight to present Resolution three two two six in recognition of National Suicide Prevention Month. Next slide, please. So the week of September fifth through eleventh is the official National Suicide Prevention Week, and September is National Recovery Month. And I know I've shared this data with the Board before, but suicide continues to be the second leading cause of death in our young people. So this is really a public health crisis. I'm here usually talking to you about COVID. But as a social worker, this has been my life's work around supporting mental health and well-being of our students and our families. And this is one that oftentimes causes discomfort, and people don't really want to talk about. We also see locally that here our data really trends with the national trends. So you'll remember that California Healthy Kids data. One in five of our local students, you know, reports feeling like, you know, suicide is an option or considering suicide. Sorry, that's the question. And so that's really distressing. We know the COVID pandemic layered on top of that, you know, typical level of distress and all of the multiple and complex traumas that our communities have faced are likely going to see those numbers go up. And so we're really concerned about that and really want to call that out. So our focus, what we're asking our community and everyone to do is really connect. Say something. If you notice that someone's struggling or doesn't seem okay or isn't coming to school, or even if this is a colleague, just say something. How are you doing? Are you okay? Listen without shame or blame for the person who's sharing their feelings and for yourself. I will say, as a parent of two teenage girls, that's really hard, but we just have to be there and listen. Then focus on safety, trying to make sure that that individual is safe in that moment, and then connect to help. We've done a number of things this past school year and moving forward. The virtual calming room, we've launched the Grace app, which is a really student-focused app. And we encourage everyone to go and download that app and view those resources. And we also are continuing to place mental health staff out at all of our school sites using some of that CARES funding. So we asked the Board to approve this resolution in support of suicide prevention tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Flores. Do we have any public comment on this resolution?
No, there is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Any board discussion? Well, before I take a motion, I will just say I really, truly appreciate you bringing this resolution forward. Suicide prevention awareness is something we all have to strive for. It's something that we train our students on every year. Everyone in our system at all levels has to be aware and ready to respond. So I would just encourage anyone who can to, you know, to even take some training if you haven't. There is a wonderful course called QPR. That's Question, Persuade, Refer, that I had the opportunity to take a couple of years ago. And the most powerful takeaway for me from that was that it's better to talk about it. Sweeping it under the rug is the wrong thing to do. So there's a lot of misconceptions about talking about suicide. So to me, that was the most important takeaway. So you can help someone, and sometimes that can be all the help they need. You never know when you can save a life. So I really appreciate this resolution. We'll take a motion at this point. Okay, student preferential vote?
Aye.
Superintendent?
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Board members. That measure passes. I do want to go back and recognize that I missed the student preferential vote for eight point two, our resolution on college savings account. So I just wanted to give our student board member an opportunity to register a vote on that item. Thank you. Thank you, and sorry about that. I'm, you know, getting used to the roll, so... Okay, with that, we'll go to eight point four, COVID-nineteen vaccinations and testing. And we'll just welcome Ms. Flores back to the floor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So yes, we are here tonight to provide some updates on vaccination and testing. And we're here tonight with a team of district staff to share information on vaccination and testing. And I do just want to say that this team really represents a really large, multidisciplinary team that's worked across our district to really bring our unique perspective and expertise for all of the areas that these considerations impact. And we're really excited to have here tonight Dr. Olivia Casiria, who serves as our Sacramento County Public Health Officer. Next slide, please. So we start, you know, grounding ourselves in, you know, our core value and our guiding principle. And really, tonight, I want to focus on our guiding principle that says, "All students are given an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options." And really, what we're focusing on this year is our students returning to a full school day every single day this week. We're so excited to have them back on our campuses. And so as we take all this information in tonight, we listen and we learn. We really want to keep our students at the center. We always do. But we also want to take into consideration our school communities that we serve and how we keep, you know, them safe, as well as our responsibility to our larger community. So I invite us all to kind of ground ourselves in that. And so next slide, please. I am really honored and proud to have Dr. Casiria here, our Sacramento County Public Health Officer. So she's going to frame the context of COVID in our community right now. So thank you so much, Dr. Casiria. Next slide, please.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. So just to talk a little bit about where we're at. Over one hundred and forty-four thousand cases of COVID-nineteen now registered in Sacramento County. We're averaging about between four hundred to four hundred and fifty cases per day. And the case rate is at twenty-seven per a hundred thousand. Over the past two weeks, we've been watching very carefully because it did look as if we were on a plateau and then started, the numbers started declining. So that is very good news. The map that you see over here shows that there have always been differences by zip code. Some of the zip codes, the DACA ones, are where we've had the most number of cases. where we've had the most number of cases. Um, and they tend to be in the areas that are underserved. Um, over the, the summer, uh, we saw the increase in the Delta variant, which, um, is much more contagious and led to the surge that we have right now. I think one of the bright points, um, through all of this, especially with having started the vaccinations, is that, uh, during this, uh, surge, we did not really see a, um, a large increase, uh, in outbreaks in the long-term care facilities because those, um, long-term care facilities were the first ones that got the, uh, the vaccine and their vaccination rates were pretty high in the, um, eighties and nineties. And so that really helped to protect. Um, let's go to the next slide. This one shows the, uh, vaccination by zip code. It doesn't show the entire Sacramento County, but again, you will notice that there are variations again by zip code and, um, the zip codes with underserved communities tended to have lower vaccination rates. Um, as I mentioned, uh, apart from what we were able to achieve with the long-term care facilities, uh, the picture in the, uh, community at large wasn't quite as good. Uh, we were able to, um, some zip codes, actually the vaccination rates were as high as 90, but then we still have some zip codes with vaccination rates below 30. When you look by age, it actually, um, keeps, uh, reducing by, by age. Uh, so the people over the age of 65 have the highest vaccination rates. And when you look at, um, school age children, 12 to, um, 17 or 18 that are now eligible for vaccination, we have not done very well. I think the vaccinations are in the thirties, uh, for that age group. So we still have a lot of work, um, that we need to, to do in order to increase vaccinations. Uh, next slide. Is that the last? Oh, okay. So, um, what we have seen is definitely the vaccines are effective. Um, if, hopefully you are all able to get to our, our dashboard. And, uh, we do have a tab on there for vaccines and you can see how many vaccines, uh, total that have been, um, uh, administered in Sacramento County. We also recently added a chart that shows, um, the vaccine status for the cases that we have. And it shows very clearly that for, uh, individuals that are, um, not vaccinated, they have a much higher risk of getting infected. They're much higher risk of, um, being hospitalized and a much higher risk of death as well. So that's one reason why it's still so important for us to, um, continue to push with the vaccinations because we know that that's our best, um, way of getting out of this surge and out of this pandemic as well. I think that's the last slide that we have come. So, um, I'll turn it over to, back to.
Thank you, Dr. Casiria. I just wanted to, again, thank you. I know that you're limited on time. Normally we go through the presentations, as you know, Vice President Murawski, but in this case, um, I've asked, um, if, if we could maybe, uh, take any comments or questions, uh, based on the information that Dr. Casiria, uh, provided to us. Um, of course I do want to just acknowledge and thank Dr. Casiria. Uh, she was in another meeting this afternoon, uh, with us as well. And I know that her time is very limited and stretched. So, uh, if, if there are any questions, I think it might be, uh, a good idea, uh, to ask or comment, uh, during, uh, our time with her, uh, right now.
Wonderful. Is that okay with you, Dr. Casiria?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Very good. Um, let me, let me kick it off and then I'll ask my fellow board members if they have questions to, I'm really excited to, um, to be talking about, um, this issue, vaccinations and testing are, you know, two of the key measures in our, in our toolbox to keep us all safe. Um, and just before we get into it, just really again, want to appreciate you and your work and your leadership in this community, um, around COVID-19. Um, this is not easy work, not for the faint of heart. And, uh, and just, we really appreciate every, every day, every night you've spent, um, uh, working for us. So, um, so with that, I, I would just ask, uh, be, as we're going to be considering, you know, um, issues around vaccination, I really want to make sure we ask you as, as kind of the public health officer, medical professional in our community, whether we should have any concerns around the safety or efficacy of these vaccines, um, for our students.
Um, again, uh, on our dashboard, you'll see that we have been able to vaccinate and administer, um, multiple doses in the millions and, um, very successfully. And we've also shown that the vaccine is able to, uh, is very protective, is effective, and it is safe as well. Um, I know that there's been some concerns because, uh, it, uh, it's still under the emergency use authorization, but recently the Pfizer was approved, um, for individuals, um, over the age of, of, uh, of 18, uh, for, uh, that has, uh, full approval. We're still waiting. I know that the, um, there's still a lot of data that is being reviewed by CDC and FDA for the full approval for, um, ages, uh, 12 and up. And then also, um, as you see on this slide, they're still waiting for authorization for students five and up.
Okay. Thank you. But as, as far as we know, based on the data that has come in and the millions of, of children that have been vaccinated so far, um, the safety and efficacy, uh, looks very positive. That.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I wanted to open it up to my fellow board members for any questions. Member Garcia, and, uh, I just want to remind board members because we, we are, you know, back at the dais again. If you, if you'd like, you can press your, um, press your little button to let me know that you want to speak. Thank you. Go ahead, Member Garcia.
Thank you. So thank you so much, Dr. Casiria, for, um, all the work that you've done, um, and, um, continue to do. Now I just wanted to, um, ask a little bit about, um, you know, the goal of the, of the public health guidance, um, from CDC to CDPH to the local public health guidance relative to, um, to keep making sure that kids, um, you know, are able to come to school in person and doing everything that we can to make sure that they stay in school so that they can learn in person, um, in the safest, um, you know, um, manner possible, right? Creating the most, um, safe en, environment. So I just, I just maybe want you to, um, perhaps underscore, um, sort of the role that the vaccine plays in making sure that we continue to, um, that we not disrupt, um, the, the learning for our students, um, relative to, you know, not having a vaccine or, or some of our families not becoming back vaccinated. So how does that impact learning? Um?
Yeah. So if I can, uh, uh, backtrack a little bit and go back to when we started this pandemic, I think you all recall that, um, when we started seeing the numbers increase and we did not know what the impact would be in children, there was a lot of concern about, um, the safety of children because of, you know, the, the, um, environment that they're in, it's a congregate setting. There's a lot of interaction between, uh, different children. And so at that point, um, the decision was made to, uh, close the schools. And of course, at the beginning, we didn't know how long it would take. We thought that once we control the numbers, that we'd be able to get back to normal. But of course, as Dr. Fauci has said, uh, often, is that the virus is dictating what is going to happen. So, um, what, what has happened over time is that as the numbers, uh, started reducing and as we went, uh, California went into the blueprint where different tiers were, uh, assigned to counties depending on the level of infection in the community. Uh, for when we reached a certain level, I think you all recall the red, the magical red tier, uh, it was considered, and this was consistent from, both from CDC and CDPH, that the levels in the community were low enough that it would be safe to, um, open the schools. And if you recall, there were a lot of protocols that were put into place with social distancing and with masking and hand washing, because at that time, those were the only, um, mitigation measures that we had that we could use to keep the children safe. Fortunately, uh, we have, now have three vaccines that are very effective and that has helped to reduce the, um, infection rates. Um, with, as I mentioned before, we've had a lot more success with long-term care facilities because we've been able to achieve pretty high vaccination rates there. But again, it was still felt that, um, we, in, with, uh, using the masking and also continuing to encourage vaccination, that we could, um, open the schools. And, uh, that's where we are at right now. It's been, I know it's been a challenge for a lot of the schools, having to do all the contact tracing and, uh, trying to make sure that we don't have infection spread within the schools. What we have seen, um, is that for many of the, uh, outbreaks that we've been involved in, is that oftentimes it's more likely that the spread is actually occurring within the community and then the children, um, get to, to a school and, and, you know, because of, um, exposure outside, they, they test positive. Um, so I think in looking at how we use vaccinations, I think, one, it's very important for us to be able to get the infection rates low, lower in the community. So that's why we continue to push vaccination within the community. But also because we know that the vaccines are effective is being able to offer them to the children that are eligible for vaccinations right now. And those are, uh, important, um, measures that we're able to take that will ensure that the school environment is safe.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Any, um, any other questions from, um, my fellow board members for Dr. Casiria? Okay. Um, I do just want to, want to follow up and ask, um, you know, being that you have, uh, kind of a bird's eye view of, of the county, uh, level. And I know you've done, you, you've done some work with our district, um, on, you know, vaccinations and testing. So I just wanted to, to maybe if you could help us put in perspective of the, the infrastructure that Sac City has built for, um, for testing and vaccination as, as it compares to maybe other districts or districts throughout the state that, as you're aware.
So for the testing, I think Sac City Unified is in a very good position. Um, and in fact, even talking to the state, they hold, uh, Sac City Unified as an example of a successful program that, um, was implemented for being able to, um, test very quickly and, uh, effectively. And so, um, uh, from, from the resources that are available right now, uh, you are able to quickly identify if, uh, someone, um, identifies that they've been exposed or if they come to the school with symptoms that you can quickly, um, isolate them and get testing done using the rapid antigen test. And then also do follow up and also, uh, be able to do the, uh, modified quarantine. So I think, uh, you know, in, in looking at the, at schools, not just in the, in Sacramento County, but looking at, um, other school districts as well, I think, uh, Sac City Unified has one of the more, um, uh, developed, uh, infrastructure for being able to do testing of that nature. I think one of the, uh, the, uh, points that you're going to discuss today is, uh, being able to expand that, especially after the experience we've had with, um, the new Joseph Bornheim and being able to, uh, implement weekly testing. And that has helped to give us the confidence to be able to keep the school open, is being able to have the same thing for all of the, the schools. So, um, and I know those are discussions that you're going to have, but I think some of the challenges that, uh, would have to be overcome is, um, being able to have enough of the antigen, uh, kits because those make it easy to get results very quickly and helps with making decisions. Uh, but in addition to that, also having, uh, the staffing and resources to be able to do testing for all of the students at least once a, a week. So those are challenges that I know you're very aware of. Victoria, Victoria is very aware of. She's an expert at this. So, um, she'll definitely be able to give you more details on that. And then with the vaccinations, um, I think what is important, one is to be able to continue offering and encouraging, uh, the community to get vaccinated because as we see the vaccination rates go up, the infections, uh, go lower. We've seen that there when we compare Sacramento County with other counties that have higher vaccination rates where we're seeing much lower, um, infections. So that's, I think, one very important, uh, point. And, uh, so being able to have, um, these vaccination clinics, um, I think is helpful. Sac City Unified has had a very strong, um, uh, collaboration with some of the providers that we worked with. Um, initially it was with, um, uh, was it Dignity or Southern? Forgotten Victoria. I don't. Dignity. Okay. Uh, and, and were able to vaccinate a lot of people. What has, what that showed, which actually is not only, uh, uh, them, was not only demonstrated at Sac City Unified, but even at the national level, is having, uh, vaccinations at the school sites. Actually, you're able to get more of the family members vaccinated that way because the school is a place that they're accustomed to coming to for services. They have a lot of trust. And so it is easier to be able to get them to, to get the vaccinations at that point. Um, and then, uh, I think of course we're looking at, uh, the vaccinations for, uh, those 12 and up that are eligible for it right now. And so being able to see how you would be able to do that right now. Um, well, as I mentioned before, uh, in meeting with the superintendent is that we're doing discussions and still waiting for, uh, CDPH in terms of what their timeline they're looking at in terms of, uh, being able to either have mandates or look for other ways of incentivizing vaccinations in that age group.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Casiria, for that, um, that helpful perspective. Um, I, I will talk about this more, but, um, my feeling is sort of the time for incentives with, uh, with a lot of these things is, is over. We've, we've tried that and we've given folks time. Um, and this was, you know, but more, more, more importantly on the, on the adult side, um, I think we, we really need to move forward with considering just broadly through society, um, our, our duties to each other and, uh, and requiring, um, that we're, that we all, that we all do our duties and get vaccinated. But, um, I did have one final question, just because you're, you know, the medical, the medical doctor again, um, that, um, in terms of how we should be thinking about the health risk for our students from, on the one hand, the health risk from COVID and the risk from disrupted schooling and all of that versus the risk of vaccination? Do you have a, a, a sense of, you know, because I think that's kind of, that's one of the things that, that we'd be weighing. You always weigh kind of the costs and benefits, right, of, of making a decision like that. So, you know, we know COVID is out there. We know that's a real, you know, front and center possibility. And then there's also, you know, so much, um, pros and cons with the, with any vaccine, right, as an intervention. So.
Right.
Just kind of frame that or think about that, the health risk from COVID versus vaccine.
Well, definitely when you're thinking about the health risk with COVID, it's much higher. Because we do know that even though fortunately with even the increase in cases that we've seen with schools opening up, most of them have been mild. And the hospitalizations, at least in Sacramento and California for school age children, has continued to be low. But that is not a guarantee because we have seen that in other areas in the United States, they have seen an opt increase in hospitalizations for the pediatric age group and an increase in deaths as well. And we know some of the complications that can come with that, with some of the things like myocarditis and other autoimmune firestorms that can come with some of the complications with COVID-19. As far as the, with the vaccines, as I've said, there's been a lot of data and a lot that has been studied, both at the CDC and and the FDA, looking at the numbers. I think you're all aware that there was a time when there was some concern with the mRNA vaccines with complication of myocarditis in in children, especially boys. But what I can say is that the numbers, that the numbers continue to be low for the children that end up with that complication. There have not been any deaths and even for those that were hospitalized, it was only for a short period of time. And so if you compare that with, if somebody did end up with a severe case of COVID-19, if they ended up with complications, usually those are very severe. So I think that's important to be aware of that there, that, and actually, when you look at the documents about Pfizer, it does mention that as one of the considerations. So for individuals that have concerns, I think definitely being able to talk with their doctor about it would be important. But otherwise, I, there's, there've been a lot of misinformation and myths about what can happen with people who get the COVID vaccine. And so that's important to be sure that you are there to be able to answer the questions and dispel those myths that it does not cause infertility, which is one thing that we've heard several times within the youth groups. And also the fact does not cause magnet, it does not magnetize you and there've been questions about the spike protein. And to, to know that the data that we have is that the spike protein does not travel all over the body, it just stays mainly at the site and then maybe at the, no, it's the site of the injection. And also again, to understand how these vaccines work. Because I think there's been some questions about how exactly they work. And it's important for people to understand that what the vaccine does is teach your body to recognize the COVID virus without actually having the infection so that if you do get infected after you're fully vaccinated, that your body can quickly mount an antibody response and get rid of the virus before it multiplies and overwhelms the system.
Wonderful. Well, it's always such a pleasure to have you join us. I always learn so much from you every time that you've, you've joined us for our board meeting. So really appreciate your time and all the information of helping us understand, you know, how to weigh the pros and cons of the choices ahead of us. You know, we know we, there are no perfect choices. We're making the best of, of the, you know, the bad choices that we have in, in some sense, but really appreciate your partnership all the way through this pandemic. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And Victoria, if you do need me at, at some point, I, I'll still have my phone, so I, I can log off, but I can quickly log back on if you need to, need to answer any other questions.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kessirie. And I just have to say, she and her team have been fabulous. They're incredibly responsive. And they are small but mighty and we're so grateful for you. So have a lovely evening. Thank you. All right. So, so keeping our students' safety, our, our school communities, our employees, our whole community really at heart tonight, we are going to talk about providing some of the highest levels of safety that we can while still managing the realities of this COVID pandemic and all that Dr. Kessirie laid out for us tonight. So we've created these three pathways or considerations for our board and our community tonight, and we will take you through each one of them. We'll start with our status quo, what we're doing already, what we can continue to do. We've got a pathway number two that we want to spend some time talking about that looks at requiring vaccination or weekly testing for staff and students. And then pathway three, really focusing on requiring vaccination for staff and students. So we'll take you through the details of each one tonight. So next slide, please. So we'll start with the status quo and what we're doing right now. Next slide, please. So right now, we're focusing on implementing the public health order for all education staff that either they're fully vaccinated or weekly tested. We've already created a way for staff to submit their vaccination status or their weekly testing that they're going to do. And so part of what we'll have to do in this process is follow up with all of those staff who don't submit their weekly test results. So that'll be some additional load that we'll have. Right now, those students are only voluntarily tested or vaccinated. We continue to encourage, promote, provide, you know, COVID testing right there. Vaccination clinics right there at your school campus or here at the Serna office, but it is a voluntary option right now. And so part of what we're facing right now is this continuing to manage COVID cases. We've had pretty high volumes of cases to contact trace. All of our surrounding districts warned us. They've opened before us and they said this first month is really hard. I mean, we are in it as we heard some of that public comment tonight. And then we continue to have to implement all of these various complex quarantine options depending on who's vaccinated and who's signed up for testing and where those exposures happened. Next slide. So let me show you a little bit of this. You, you've seen these decision trees before. This is from our team at Sac County Public Health. So when we get to decision tree number two, where we're looking at a school exposure, you can see very quickly, you know, was the person of close contact? Yes. Were they vaccinated? Yes. We get to kind of stop there as long as they're asymptomatic. They're not sick. And so it's really, really easy to do this when someone's vaccinated. Conversely, let's say that child's not vaccine eligible yet, right? We've got someone under 12. Then we can go down and say, you know, are they registered to test? Do we have that consent? Then we can implement that modified quarantine. Again, that makes it much easier for us. Over on decision tree number three, where we're talking about community exposures, again, you can see that vaccination allows you to come back to school or work immediately as long as you remain symptom-free. That's always the caveat for all of us. So you can see that, that vaccine and testing really play a significant part in simplifying this process. And Dr. Kessirie had even commented on that as well. Next slide, please. So our current reality is we continue to deal and with, you know, exposures and positive cases mostly coming, you know, from the community onto campus. We do our best to keep as many cases as we can away. One of the things I want to focus, this is our COVID dashboard. And I want to remind our community that this is only reporting positive cases that were physically present on our campuses or our work sites during the infectious period. So this does not necessarily represent all of the cases that we're managing and contact, contact tracing, but the ones that represent, you know, some level of risk to our community. And I'll point out that that 214 total cases, that's the total. And out of 214, 81 of those cases are actively home on isolation. So that's how you read that. You subtract basically, don't add. And we've made some improvements to this. This was updated just this morning. We've added that mapping feature and we're really encouraging our site leaders or our parents or different organizations to really share this information regularly. Especially, I will say, as cases are happening on our campuses to also really reinforce the importance of all of our mitigation measures, including promoting vaccination when eligible and testing. Next slide, please. So we are continuing to go through our vaccination verification for employees. So the public health order came out in August of 2021. All employees have a choice. They either have to be fully vaccinated or weekly COVID test. And the district has until October 15th to comply with this public health order. So as of September 15th, Jay Elmquist, I just want to give him a shout out in our IT department, has really been leading this effort. He provided this data for us here tonight. Seventy-five percent of our employees have returned their survey, which is a really high rate. And of those 75%, 89 are fully vaccinated. So that's really heartening to see. Seven percent are not vaccinated and 4% declined to state. So roughly, I think it's 36-ish percent we're looking at, will need to do that weekly COVID testing for now. However, they can continue to turn in their vaccine records at any time. And as they get that notification to do their weekly COVID testing, it also includes a piece about vaccination. So we're really hoping, you know, that more, we'll get more of those vaccine records back to us. Next slide, please. You also, you know, have heard a lot about COVID testing. We did, you know, pre-entry testing in August and we thought 6,000 was a great number. Just this morning, I pulled our, our testing results from September 1st through today, the 16th. And we've actually done 13,251 COVID tests in basically the last two weeks. So we're roughly testing about 27% of the population and keeping a really good eye on our positivity rate, which still is hovering about 1.9, one point, sorry, 1.94%. Kind of bouncing around that 2% rate. And I do want to call out that this is a really important indicator for us. We should be seeing a lower positivity rate in our schools than we are in our counties. And that's because we're, we're, you know, really hoping that we have less COVID spread in our schools due to the fidelity of those layered mitigation measures. That lets us know it's working. We're not going to have a COVID-free school because COVID's going to be coming in from the community, but we're really wanting to work hard to prevent any of that spread. So we are seeing a lot more community cases detected in schools because our kiddos are coming to school. They might get symptomatic during the day. We're offering that immediate testing, you know, with consent, and then we're finding these cases. We're also doing that exposure testing. So if someone was exposed to COVID, if it was at their school site, they can get tested there. If it was in the community, we have them come to the Serna Center where we have some good mitigation measures and then also that surveillance testing. And as we test more, we must expect we will find more cases. We know this. It is hard work, but we really believe that this is our service to our community. This is, you know, our, our kind of, our ethic that we have to be here to support and keep our community as healthy as we can. Next slide, please. So we wanted to talk about some operations or some opportunities, sorry, and considerations for the status quo, for just staying the course with what we have going now. So some of our opportunities are, we're really seeing, especially when we look at that positivity rate, that our layered mitigation measures are proven to work. They're reducing the spread. We're not seeing any significant spread on our campuses. We've had some concerning situations and we've doubled down and done that testing to just make sure that we can, we can stop that. We continue to adjust based on new guidance. We've been doing this for about a year. We'll continue to do that. Again, our positivity rate we're seeing is that is lower than countywide and we have testing at all of our school sites and our central office. And we're continuing to grow and expand that. Since some considerations for us to keep in mind is, as we heard Dr. Kessirie tonight, our vaccination rate is below the threshold of herd, herd immunity. We're really looking for that 75, 80% like she talked about in those long-term care facilities. Particularly for our students 12 plus. When you look at that county dashboard, I think when I last looked at it, we were hovering about 54% of that population, 12 to 19, are vaccinated. We know we continue, we're going to continue to have high volumes of cases to contact trace and quarantine. We know right now we have families who are uncomfortable sending students to in-person learning. We heard from some of them tonight. Some really, you know, heart, heart distressing, I, you know, I guess stories about, about kiddos with real vulnerabilities. We know testing kit demand and supply will be limited, even Dr. Kessirie mentioned that. And our current conditions will kind of continue. I will add to current conditions, the concern about cold and flu season, it's coming. Right? And we know last year when cold and flu season came and it got colder and we all started pulling back indoors, we saw another wave of COVID. We're really hoping that won't happen, but I think, you know, past behavior is best predictor of future behavior. And it's something we have to consider. Next slide, please. So this takes us into our pathway number two, where we talk about requiring vaccination or weekly testing for staff and students. Next slide, please. So this really represents sort of the same as the public health order for education staff. So we would have parity. What we're required by public health order to do for staff, we would also require to do the same thing for students. So providing those choices to either get vaccinated or to do weekly COVID testing. Of course, if you're not age-eligible for vaccine, that would be your option right now. So that exact same process that our IT department and Jay Elmquist led about submitting those vaccine records or submitting your COVID testing, we would do the same for our students, our parents, guardians or students to be able to submit, you know, their records to us. Of course, we would have everyone registered for testing. So that would be great. Because when we go back to those quarantine options, we know everyone would be registered. And then pending approved staffing, we would offer independent study at Capital City for students who are either not vaccinated or not willing to do that weekly testing. We do also know that valid medical exemptions or conditional admissions may apply to that vaccine requirement as well. Next slide, please. So opportunities and considerations for this pathway of vaccination or testing. We know that vaccine and routine testing are proven methods for slowing the spread. Dr. Kessirie spoke to that really, really beautifully tonight. This actually might encourage some of our staff, our students or our family to get vaccinated. We know we've had people who are hesitant or not quite ready or sure, and this might help that. We do know when you think back to those decision trees of quarantine, this is going to make things a lot easier for us. The ability and ease to implement either the modified quarantine or that vaccine exemption. Particularly if all those vaccination records are documented in our system, we can look it up like that and clear a student or a staff member immediately. It also provides parity, that same option as the public health order for staff as we are doing with our students. We do have some pretty significant considerations though. And actually, Dr. Hedegaard from our special education, who serves as our assistant superintendent of special education, is actually going to take you through some of those considerations for special education. And we know that there's going to be an impact to the independent study program. We heard from Dr. Kessirie that testing kit demand and supply may be limited. We saw that with vaccine this year. So we just need to be able to be ready and predict that might happen again. And then our chief business officer, Officer Rose Ramos is going to speak with you about, you know, families that might disenroll and the impact to our budget. So with that, we'll go to next slide and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hedegaard.
And Dr. Hedegaard, if I can just interject very quickly and just say to the board that these really are say to the board that these really are considerations for us. I don't want anyone to feel that we are suggesting anything other than the fact that these are items that we need to consider as part of this discussion. And so as we provide that information, please feel free to ask any questions. Some of this just requires us to do some additional follow-up as we think about, again, these as truly what they are. They're considerations that we have to keep in mind as we discuss this item.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Victoria, for your leadership and collaboration in this area. And so just as Superintendent highlighted, while this is an area of consideration, we want to recognize this evening that it is a priority of the district that, of course, all students with IEP shall have access to their services, support that they require in a safe learning environment. Further, SAC City Unified acknowledges we have an administrative regulation which highlights that while the district will promote that all students shall be fully immunized in accordance with Health and Safety Code, we also will continue to implement students' IEPs and shall not prohibit students from accessing their special education supports and services in those safe environments. So in regards to tonight's discussion, again, the district, we're acknowledging that per California Education Code, students with an IEP may not be placed or participate in independent study unless the student's IEP team specifically provides for that participation, requiring the team to meet, hold that, hold a meeting, review the information and student data to determine that the student can independently access their curriculum. The special education services that were agreed to in the last signed IEP can be accessed and the student can make adequate progress on their IEP goals in that independent study program. So as a result of all of this, and again, highlighting what Superintendent said and in which this is our consideration, we will continue to research the challenges and opportunities that are related to considering vaccinations for all students and the implications of accessing alternative educational options for students within IEP. I believe I'm turning it over next to our Chief Business Official, Ms. Rose Ramos. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Hedegaard. Very quickly, just, I'm going to share some scenario, scenarios with you all, assuming that, you know, there is a consequence that results from vaccinations in terms of families maybe disenrolling. And we just put together some rough calculations, looking at, you know, say 100, a loss of 100 students. Of course, that's been translated to ADA calculations. And then we said, okay, what about 500? What about 1,000? So this table here shows you those different, different scenarios with the dollar amounts over to the, to the right. So you'll see for 100 students, it's about a little over a million. For 500, it's about 5.6 rounding. And for 1,000, it's about 11 million. So of course, you know, something to definitely consider, especially given our budget situation. And then, next slide, please. The other reason we are sharing this with you is because we have been keeping you all very closely informed on our current enrollment trend. This slide here represents an enrollment analysis as of September 8th. We are monitoring enrollment daily. We always do that regardless of, you know, whether or not enrollment is trending up or down just to see how we are comparing to projections. But this year in particular, it's very, very important that we're closely watching enrollment because we've noticed that over the summer, our enrollment, our actual enrollment has been trending quite lower than our projections. In August, when we presented a budget update to, to the board and the public, we shared that our enrollment was trending about 1,600 students less than projections, which is a significant loss, assuming that would hold. As of this date, the 8th of September, we were trending a little over 1,000 under our projected numbers. And so what's happened since the 8th and what's happening over the last few weeks is that our enrollment on a daily basis is fluctuating quite a bit. We'll have one day with a slight increase, another day with another decrease. And as you'll hear in our presentation later, when we present the year-end financial statements, the impact, if we do not recover this enrollment this year, we're held harmless. We all know that for this year. But next year is the year that we're going to have to use our actual enrollment. So we just have to be very mindful of the impact that any change can possibly have on our future enrollment. And so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much to the both of you for speaking on those really important topics. And so our last pathway that we want to walk you through is requiring vaccination for staff and students. Next slide, please. So this would require students and staff to be fully vaccinated when eligible. And we know from hearing, you know, our public, all of our public health officials, actually, this really does provide the safest environment possible. The more of us that who are eligible are able to get vaccinated, the safer it is. So for those currently eligible for vaccine, we kind of looked at what some of the other districts that we're doing and have put forth a recommendation on a timeline. This is just, you know, to consider. So having a first dose by November 21st. So that would give people and our families some time. Your second dose by December 12th. And then you would submit your vaccination records no later than December 31st. So we would ideally by the end of this, you know, year, have a significant population that would be fully vaccinated. And remember that definition is two weeks past your last dose in whatever, you know, course of vaccine you're getting. So students who are newly eligible, I'm sure we've got someone who's turned 12 just today. So happy birthday to that person, would have 30 days after their 12th birthday to just get their first dose. And then when vaccine is approved for 5+ and we're hearing that that will be October, so excited for all of those parents with, with children in that age range. We would, of course, establish new timelines based on vaccine access. Right now, we're hearing there's plenty of vaccine even for booster doses and even for, you know, the 5+ population. But we all know we've been through this pandemic together for over a year. That could change. And so we'll just have to be flexible as we've talked about before. And next slide, please. So students who are not eligible for vaccine or have a valid medical exemption or some other kind of exemption would just need to register and consent for weekly testing. So that would be that other alternative if for some reason you could not get vaccinated. Of course, pending approved staffing, independent study at Capital City would be offered for students who are not vaccinated by the established timeline and didn't meet one of those valid exemptions. And we know that those valid medical exemptions and conditional admissions, much like they apply now with, with school required vaccines, would continue to apply. And we would just do that weekly testing for, for those individuals. Next slide, please. So some opportunities in considering vaccination as our main pathway. We know it really is the best mitigation measure for stopping the spread of COVID. We saw those maps that Dr. Casiri talked about. And we know that our district serves some of areas with some of the lower vaccine rates. So this would actually help increase those vaccination rates and some of our most impacted zip codes. Hopefully really protecting all of those other people that our children live with and reside in households. We could potentially consider ending outdoor masking and/or even allowing some of these gatherings in outdoors in safer spaces if we know that our vaccination and our testing rates are really high. It also provides a reassurance that the vast majority of staff and students are vaccinated. We heard tonight, you know, from families who have, you know, children with medical issues. We've got staff who have, you know, their own health issues or care for people in their home. We've had, you know, parents asking, can I ask if the teacher is vaccinated? So this would really just give that reassurance to our community. We know that our, our staff and our students who are vaccinated would automatically qualify for that, that exemption to quarantine if they were fully vaccinated and we had all those records documented again. And again, with modified quarantine, everyone else would be registered for testing. And we're going to talk a little bit more tonight about the other California districts that are leading the effort in these vaccine mandates for both staff and students. And so much of those considerations that you heard for pathway two are the same in this, in this pathway. We know that our current state mandates for school immunizations don't require COVID at this time. We know that there'll be an impact on independent study. We have to have those considerations for special education, implications and exemptions that Assistant Superintendent Dr. Hedegaard spoke to. So just hold that in your mind as you consider pathway three. And then again, the same consideration for families that may disenroll from the district and the impact to our budget, what Chief Business Officer Rose Ramos spoke to as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our in-house legal, Raul Bosio, to take you to your rest.
Thank you, Victoria. Good evening, Board and Superintendent. But to continue our presentation, we want to share with you what some of the other districts in California, some of the details from the other districts that are requiring the COVID vaccination or are considering making that vaccination mandatory. Really just two districts thus far have required or will be mandating the vaccination. That's Culver City and LAUSD. And Oakland Unified is, is currently looking to move in that direction, pending that decision here probably at their next board reading. Some of the details that address some of the topics which our group has previously addressed. All three of the districts would require that the vaccination be required for eligible staff and students. The deadline for providing proof of vaccination in Culver City is November 19th. And in LAUSD, January 10th. Oakland has not yet determined that and has included some language directing the superintendent to, to come back and report on his recommendation or her recommendation no later than October. Both Culver City and LAUSD are also requiring weekly COVID testing in addition to the requirement for the vaccine. At least at the present time, the LAUSD resolution does include some language directing the superintendent to continue to monitor the district's testing and vaccination data and determine when to, when to allow an exemption for vaccinated students from the district's weekly testing requirement. The options for unvaccinated but eligible students, Culver City appears to still be developing what this option may look like and has included some, some language potentially to create a separate cohort. LAUSD has stated that students who do not meet the mandatory vaccination requirement would be sent to, would be provided the opportunity to attend the independent study program there. Next slide, please. As was previously mentioned, there are a number of immunizations that are currently required in all California schools under the Health and Safety Code. Those immunizations are listed there. Should a student not comply with those immunization requirements, those students can be excluded and they must be excluded from, from school subject to a recognized medical exemption. So as that topic was, was brought up previously, medical exemptions are, are possible from the required immunizations. And students with an IEP, again, as was previously discussed, must still be provided with their services, even though technically the immunization requirement applies to such students. Again, the students with an IEP must be provided those services. So, and they must be enabled to continue with those services and receive those services. So a school district like LAUSD, like Culver City, like Oakland's moving towards who requires the COVID vaccination is going above and beyond what California state law provides and requires under the Health and Safety Code currently. But nevertheless, it is a power that is within the, the powers of a local jurisdiction, local governmental entity and school district to require certain health and safety measures in order to maintain the safety of its, of its schools in this case. And again, the other, like LA Unified, we also have the independent study program where students who don't have an exemption but who were not vaccinated would be provided that opportunity to attend the independent study program. Next slide, please. So to conclude, next steps. Although vaccinations are the best mitigation measure for stopping the spread of COVID-19, the recommendation is to come back to the board with a more detailed information about the following considerations that we've been discussing throughout this presentation. Number one, operationalizing the exemptions, the medical exemptions, including that requirement that, that students with an IEP be continued to be provided their, their services. Number two, the independent study staffing and capacity, as I mentioned previously. Should a student not be vaccinated, they would be afforded the opportunity to attend the independent study program. And lastly, as Ms. Ramos discussed, potential yet unknown impacts on the district's enrollment and budget. And that concludes our presentation.
All right. Thank you so much to all of our staff for that presentation. Ms. Moretti, do we have public comment on this item?
We do. We have 16 live comments.
Okay, okay. So we'll take those at one minute each, please. Thank you.
The first public comment is from Bjork Cardali.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Go right ahead.
Thank you. So my name is Bjork Cardali and I'm the mother of a third grader. I'm also an ER doctor and I've been on the front lines through this pandemic, seeing basically what the worst that COVID has to offer. So I kept my son home for a year and a half for distance learning and recently sent him back to school. But on the first two days of school, he got exposed to a COVID positive classmate. After experiencing firsthand this process and trying to understand the school's policy, I just noticed several gaps. Everywhere I looked, I got conflicting guidance and no one seemed clear on the specific rules when it comes to COVID, COVID exposure and quarantine. So my plea is for better and clearer guidelines for how we, the parents, can keep our children safe and how we can avoid exposing whole classes due to kind of wishy-washy guidelines. So I have a couple of kind of concerns that I wanted to bring up. So we're notified of an exposure for our kids, but we're not notified of how that exposure comes along. So we're told that if our child has been unmasked with the other child, for example, during mealtime, then they have to stay home for 10 days. But we're not told who actually had COVID. So there's no way for us to determine that and make the choices we need to make to keep the kids safe.
Please wrap up, Ms. Cardali.
So another comment was, in order to go back to school after quarantine, you're required to give a negative PCR, but there's no date on when that negative PCR should be after exposure. So my suggestion would be to have that negative PCR be on day three to five after exposure just to actually have it safe because of the incubation period.
Okay. Thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sid Johori. And you have one minute.
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. I'm excited about some of the options that are, have come up. I, as a parent, and I've just been texting several other parents, would love to see an option for, for mandatory surveillance testing and vaccinations. I think there's been a lot of talk about how important it is to have both of those things, especially given how, how COVID can spread and especially with the Delta variant. I also wanted to touch upon the importance of updating our the importance of updating our dashboard more consistently. It looks great, but I know that there are a lot of parents talking about what's going on in our classrooms and it doesn't look as though what's reflected on the dashboard reflects what our real world in on the ground observations are. And that's concerning and it breeds a lot of fear. And lastly, parroting what the last parent talked about, the communication on exposures is really confusing. It's you get an email and there's no clear direction on what to do next. And then it may be several days before the district contacts you. So if we could work on that, that would be amazing. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johori.
Our next comment is from Gwene Bird. Ms. Bird, I believe you are on mute.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go right ahead.
Oh, my goodness. I'm so sorry. I've been trying to unmute. I don't know what happened. Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm the parent of two high schoolers in the district and I'll get right to the point. I'm I'm calling to opt in for option three. There's no reason to not start down that road right now. We can do those concurrent with what your legal counsel was just talking about right now. There's no reason to wait and do things in a linear fashion. You can start right now with the requirements for vaccination for all eligible students and staff, setting forth the deadlines to to put that into play. There's no reason to delay this. You know, as as was presented, all there are several other districts who have found a way to do this in the state of California. And so the consequences of not requiring everybody on a school campus to be vaccinated are vast. Not only does the campus remain a possible vector for community to spread the disease, which impacts the entire Sacramento area, it also impacts kids academically. My high school kids have never learned how to do a good old fashioned research paper using resources from the library because they're not open to hang out in or to do research. One of the biggest impacts is having on our kids' social and emotional well-being. Yes, they're back to school in person, but we all know that our school campuses don't look anything like they did pre-virus. And the number of activities that our students can do has been severely restricted, no field trips, restricted attendance at sporting events, socially distanced dances, fewer extracurricular club events, no socializing at lunch. Remember what it was like to be in high school? It wasn't just about learning, it was about the socialization. They've lost so much about what it's about to be in high school. This virus has taken all that away. Please do what we can now to stop making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carrie Enright.
As parents of three SAC City students, we urge you to prioritize their safety by selecting science-informed pathway two or three regarding testing and vaccination of staff and students, which may keep many families from disenrolling. We urge the district to update the COVID dashboard more frequently and much more accurately and to get consistent decision-making and reporting by health aides across sites. And to provide transparent district-wide guidance regarding safe fall weather meal times while we're without tables and shade structures and clear policies for teachers whose students aren't masking properly. We also urge the board to prioritize the continuity of education for children who must quarantine or stay home entirely with access to consistent, timely, equitable, quality instruction, including for kids with exceptionalities and bilingual learners and without uncompensated increases in workload for in-person classroom teachers who are overwhelmed. We don't have time to reexamine and reconvene. The risks and the needs are here now and it is time for action. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Kristin Gorey. You have one minute, please.
There we go. Hi, my name is Kristin Gorey. I have two daughters, a fourth grader and a kinder at Bancroft. We intended to sign up for independent study, but because our daughters have IEPs, we felt forced into sending them in person. Even though our kinder is immunocompromised, we appreciate the onsite testing. However, not enough families are participating. My fourth grader said only one kid in her class gets tested besides her. The testing is so easy. My kinder says she loves that she can do it all by herself and the health aides count the seconds for her. She tells us about the fuzzy ball cleaning her nose every time she gets the test. My fourth grader says the testing makes her feel safer on campus. However, the district should do a better job of advertising onsite testing. So many parents still don't know about it. Robocalls, letters, anything to get the word out. Because testing participation is so low, the district should mandate surveillance testing. It is shown, along with other mitigation measures, to slow the spread of COVID. Will the district please vote and implement mandatory surveillance testing today?
Thank you very much for your comment.
Our next speaker is Justin Hearn.
Oh, hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, Justin, go ahead.
Thank you. I am speaking on behalf of a friend, Courtney O'Connor, who cannot attend at this moment. She is currently working in the UC system, moving positive COVID cases into isolation right now. So I'm speaking around her time. I am, she is speaking that the UC system, the California State University system, has managed to mandate this and so can Sacramento City Unified. LA Unified has managed to unify this and make this mandatory and so can Sacramento City Unified. As a parent in a school district of three children and as a teacher in another school district, my number one job is to keep my children in school for their social, emotional well-being and to keep them safe. I feel like our school district is able to be not reactive but proactive in this. And to, I urge you to vote for number three and to have mandated testing. The science is clear that vaccination works, masking works, ventilation works, contact tracing works, testing works, and I urge you to bring on the mandated vaccination for our school. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is May Vang.
I believe it might be Mai Vang?
Yeah, it's Mai.
Hi Mai, welcome back.
Hi, hi, everyone. Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar and Board of Trustees. This is Sacramento City Council member Mai Vang and I'm calling in today to support a pathway to mandate all eligible SAC City students and staff to be vaccinated and regularly tested. I represent South Sacramento in the city council and I have the zip code in my district with the largest cases of COVID, not just in the city, but in the county, that zip code 95823. And many of our families in the 95823 zip code attend SAC City neighborhood schools. And many of those families live in multi-generational households, from children to grandparents to great-grandparents. And when one household member is infected with COVID, it spreads to the entire family, which is the reason why our infection rates are so high in our district. Over the past month, I've had the opportunity to work closely with 20 organizations and Dr. Casirier through our SAVE Coalition, Sacramento Alliance for Vaccine Equity, really dedicated to addressing these issues through a coordinated, in-language, targeted vaccination campaign effort throughout South Sacramento. I'm really calling today because I believe that all of our jurisdiction must work together or it threatens our collective effort and it undermines the health and safety of our entire community. I know that what happens in our school also impacts our entire neighborhoods and our city. And as local governmental bodies, we all have a responsibility to protect the health of our entire community and must use all the tools we have to do so. When unvaccinated eligible students or staff are at our campuses, we know that we have no defense to protect those who are on site. I know many of our students need the one-on-one in-person instruction. They need support, they need stability, and we got to do everything we can to protect not only the learning space of our students, but the public health of our students. I know this is a Herculean task for all of you. And this past year and a half has been incredibly hard for all of us. And while there was no blueprint for opening our schools during a pandemic, what we all know and what we can do is follow the science. Vaccines and masks is the strongest way to protect our school community. My office and our SAVE Coalition stands ready to support you, our students, our staff and our families of SAC City. And again, just thank you so much for everything that y'all have done over the past year and a half. It's going to take all of us to really protect our communities and I stand here in solidarity to support all of you, our staff and our scholars and families. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Vang, and thank you for your incredible leadership and hustle throughout this entire pandemic. I I stand in awe of the effort that you have put into getting our community vaccinated. So I just wanted to take that time to appreciate you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Johnson.
Hi, I'm calling in to advocate for the option three. Plenty of precedent, obviously, for requiring vaccinations for public school. I'm really looking forward to October and the possible vaccination of my young children. And I do believe that it is fair to give the socially conscious people who do the socially responsible thing of vaccination, the priority in a public school. And to let those who choose not to navigate this system of independent study, you know, allowing, of course, for those who are truly unvaccinatable. I understand that. Also, there's the the outdoor eating policies, I think, are really great. They've been instituted at some schools. And I grew up in a school that didn't have a cafeteria and we ate in our classrooms, which also seems like a good option for mitigating some spread. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mohammed Kashmiri.
Mo, are you there?
It looks like he is no longer online.
Okay, very good.
But we do have Noel Apostol Collin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. First, I just want to appreciate you all. I'm so excited tonight to hear about these these other options, options two and three. And I want to say that I think before vaccines are authorized for our kids ages five to 11, before that happens, I strongly advocate implementing mandatory testing for all students immediately. Because right now, all of the the Swiss cheese mitigation members that you all described in schools, all of those measures came out of what we learned last year worked pretty well in schools. And the Delta variant is a whole new animal and we don't have data about how those mitigation measures yet work with Delta. And given that there are, you know, fewer than half the number, I know in our school, fewer than half the kids signed up to be voluntarily tested, we just really have no idea how many cases there are in our schools right now. And so I I just want to strongly support weekly mandated testing right now. I think it's the only path to truly supporting our kids' well-being by being able to be in schools and and feel safe. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
It looks like Mohammed Kashmiri is back online. Mr. Kashmiri, you have one minute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mo. Go right ahead.
I, you know, I think people have said what I need to say, so I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Bailey.
Hi, I want to start with just by saying I want to say what what Mai Vang said, everything she said. But I'll add a few more of just my thoughts. I think one of the things that sort of dawned on me is, as I was listening tonight, is that the where we're at with our independent study or not at is maybe a better way to put it, is really going to impact how we move forward. And if we choose pathway two or three, if there's, especially three, if we don't have a place for students to go that that are not willing to be or able to be vaccinated, that is a huge problem. So the fact that this wasn't, that wasn't on our agenda tonight, it has to become a focus again. Another thing I heard is an office staff person calling in earlier who was talking about having to do COVID tracing. That can't be. Our office staff are so overwhelmed. They're getting more calls than they've ever had, trying to figure out our attendance clerks, trying to figure out attendance. That just can't be part of of how we're moving forward. They they need to be able to have bathroom breaks. I know our staff, office staff person is working so incredibly hard. That just can't be on her plate and her responsibility. And my last thing is just updating the dashboard on a more regular basis. I think San Juan's doing it two or three times a day. I think that's going to give parents a lot more confidence in being able to have some idea about what's happening in their school.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Sarita Syrup.
Hi, yes, this is Sarita Syrup. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you. You have one minute to speak? We can no longer hear you.
All right. So I have a slightly different than yet to tell you. Last week, we received notice that my son was an elementary school student, was exposed to someone COVID positive on campus. And my understanding was that the health aides administer rapid tests to those students. And if a student is also presenting any symptoms, that student also receives a PCR test. Well, instead of rapid test results, we received a PCR test result four days after the test was supposedly taken. And in fact, I went and had all of us, the entire family, retested and we are all negative. We have gone through the quarantine process by the book, because I believe that protects not only my, our family, but also others. But I had serious concerns regarding the testing and handling of samples. Furthermore, when I spoke to our principal on the phone, he repeatedly equivocated and would not provide a concrete answer to any of my questions, including who I would speak with regarding the testing going on on our campus. As a result, I have unfortunately made the decision to not allow my sons to be tested on campus. So we'll have to take them elsewhere where I have faith in the testing procedures and handling of samples in the event of further exposure. Do not get me wrong, I believe in testing and more in regular testing. I urge you to enforce option three. But you must ensure testing is done each and every time according to outline policy and procedure so that we can have faith in their results.
Okay, thank you.
Guarantee and clarity about testing.
Thank you. Can you please wrap it up?
Who can communicate with parents clearly and accurately. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Shonda Wesley.
This is Shonda again. My child is too young to be vaccinated. And we all know that vaccinated people right now can catch and spread the virus as well. And we expect more variants in the future. Superintendent has more than once asked us in independent study to give him a chance at in-person instruction due to his school safety plan. And what have we gotten? Two major outbreaks and a COVID dashboard that only updates twice a week instead of three times a day like they do at the neighboring San Juan Unified District. Add to that Elk Grove Unified has 20,000 more students than we do, but half the infections and quarantines. Since vaccinating an eight-year-old is not currently possible, we must have mandatory weekly onsite testing for everyone on the campus, whether vaccinated or not, as our mayor, now two councilmembers, supervisor and assembly member have now all asked for. And as far as mandatory vaccines, I completely support that, but don't believe that testing is a reliable alternative for those who don't vaccinate. Instead, they should be immediately granted entry into independent study. That alone may change their mind about getting a vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, Shonda.
Our final speaker online is Tessa Santos.
Good evening. This year, I began my seventh year teaching in this district, the most stressful year of my career, and we have only just finished our 10th day of school. I teach first grade. My students are too young to be given the option to be vaccinated. The fact that my students are virtually unprotected from COVID-19 is at the forefront of my brain at every moment throughout the day. As you can imagine, getting six and seven-year-olds to wear properly fitting masks over their mouth and nose from to wear properly fitting masks over their mouth and nose from eight to two is a constant struggle. The idea of having 24 students return to learn was stressful. However, as of Monday, I had my 30th student added to my roster with only one awaiting independent study. This week, 29 students attempted to safely learn in my first grade class. At some point, they should be concapped to new schools. The concapping process is flawed, that's not news to me. However, the lack of planning and the ease in which the district has shoved 30 unprotected students into my classroom during a pandemic is negligent and horrifying. Since the beginning of the school year, I have had six students quarantined, and to my knowledge, no known cases in my classroom. As of this afternoon, our school dashboard states that we have two students quarantined and one case. I continue to worry that the lack of communication and transparency from our district is misleading parents and giving them a false sense of comfort. I have been hesitant to send this.
Please wrap up your comments. Thank you.
... comment, out of fear. However, my fear can no longer outweigh my desire to keep my students safe. I hope that the board will immediately ensure that no classroom is overpopulated for any number of days, and continue to strive for complete and total transparency with families and staff to ensure safe and healthy classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our public comment period. Yes, thank you. Okay, with that, I will open it up for discussion. Do we have any board members wishing to speak on this item? Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to thank staff for this presentation. I think it was just very well done in terms of setting the different pathways, and then the table on what other school districts have done. I think we can add, I believe San Diego is also going to have this conversation next week or the week after. San Francisco, I believe, had this conversation. They opted not to require vaccines, but they are at 90% vaccination rate. So, you know, well over the herd immunity that many public health experts, you know, tout. So I just really wanted to maybe ask a couple of questions and also just make some comments. You know, we heard a lot about the dashboard, just wondering if staff can talk a little bit about, you know, the frequency of updating the dashboard. I noticed that, I know the system is overloaded right now, so I want to make sure that that's clear. We know that, you know, from hearing from other districts, as Victoria mentioned earlier, the first month is just really hard, again, because the system gets overloaded. We also know that we have a strong system and process in place. Dr. Cassiri just brought that to light, you know, something, a process that's recognized by the state. So this is not perfect. And we just need to recognize that. But just wondering from staff in terms of the updates to the dashboard, again, wondering how frequently those are being made, and what is the goal in terms of updating it more frequently, daily, multiple times a day? So if you can just share a little bit about that. And then I just have a couple of other questions as well.
Yeah, I can share that we update it twice a week. So Tuesday and Friday, we updated it this morning. We had an error pointed out, we fixed it. And I will just say, we are embracing the cycle of continuous improvement right now, and growth mindset that my C reminds us all of. We are on day 10, and I just can't stress enough how overwhelmed, you know, this all is. Our staff are working tirelessly to enter in real time. And as soon as they enter in our frontline health management system, when we pull that data, it will populate. We even have staff that are going back to fix for errors. You know, you miss one box, right? And it doesn't show up. And so we're working as hard and as fast as we can. We'll work with Bob Lyons, our chief IT officer, and the whole team who's helped plum that. But I will just say, you know, when we're running all that data, it's pulling away from all these other tasks that we need to be doing as well. And we can't, you know, I just want to caution about not being so focused on the data, that we're not actually doing the work. And it's a constant balance.
Yeah, I know. And again, as someone who worked with other school districts, this has been happening since other school districts opened, right? We're just one of those school districts in the state that opened so late. So I don't want to minimize the concerns from the parents, but I also want to acknowledge that I feel like the system, it's working itself through. And also recognize that your team has made an amazing job at making sure that there is a strong system in place.
Member Garcia, can I also interject, and also, of course, just make a commitment? I won't ask Mr. Lyons and his team, but just keep in mind that we are going to do everything we can to create the handshake, if you will, between systems that didn't exist before. And certainly, one is taking information from the system that Victoria just mentioned, which is frontline, and then the dashboard, which is another system. And how do we make sure that we create a handshake in which the gold standard is what Victoria just said, when you input something in frontline, that it would immediately update the public-facing dashboard, which is another system. So that's why you see the variation that you just described in districts across the state. Some of them have crafted a way in which the public-facing dashboard is pulling data in real time. It's not something that was provided to us in any kind of way from the state, saying, here's what everyone can do, or here's the main portal for data entry. And then you just create a public-facing one. So everyone is doing it in different kinds of ways. I suppose that the gold standard should be, and hopefully we can actualize this, that, you know, the system that our health aides and our health services staff are inputting in is immediately uploading and refreshing the public-facing system. And so Mr. Lyons will be leading that effort so that we don't take away from Victoria Flores and her team, but rather figure out a way on the backend to pull data in a way that can show in real time.
Okay, thank you. And then that, you know, reduces the workload for Victoria's team. I do have a question on the vaccination verification for employees. So 75% have returned the survey, and then you have a breakdown of the 75% result. But we also have 25% that have not returned the survey. So I'm just wondering, how is that being addressed?
Sorry, I was muted. I think J. M. Quest is on tonight, so if he wants to pop in. Jay, can I hand this one off to you?
Sure. Good evening, Superintendent, Vice President, and members of the board. Good to be here with you. This Tuesday, we began sending out a testing protocol to about 1,600 of our staff who did not report or told us that they had not been vaccinated or declined to state. They have from Tuesday at noon until next Monday at noon to submit the proof of their testing, or they can submit through that same survey, the verification of vaccination. We'll do a re-upload between noon on Monday and noon on Tuesday of next week of the data, and send out another testing protocol. We'll be able to pull on a weekly basis compliance, and we'll be able to then use those numbers to do whatever we've decided to do as a district as we move forward through the testing protocol.
Okay, so hopefully that percentage will shrink, and there will be fewer who will have to do the weekly testing as we move forward or, you know, past October 15.
Member Garcia, I can tell you that that is true, and we are seeing more people report through that, that they are vaccinated.
Okay, okay. I know, as important as this is, you know, there's so many things that we're getting that it's sometimes easy to miss, you know, critical information that needs to be shared. So I'm glad to hear that. You know, just in reflecting upon the multiple pathways that are before us, for me, it's just, I feel like it's very easy. The path forward is very clear to me, that it should be option number three, that they're required to vaccinate all eligible students and staff is a must, in order for us to keep our schools open, in order for us to keep our students learning, socializing. They're missing out on sports, on other activities, enrichment programs, and just, you know, the experience of being in school. So I think path number three is the way that we can get there more easily, where we can provide the safest learning environment for our students. We've heard over and over that vaccinations are the one tool in our toolbox that will curb, you know, transmission, that will prevent any additional variants from forming. And I just want to use that tool, you know, it's the hammer of the tools. I just want us to be unafraid to use that hammer. I think we need to do everything we can in our district as elected officials to make sure that we have as many kids learning in person, and that we keep as many kids in the classrooms as possible. A safer learning environment also creates a safer working environment for our staff. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. I do have additional suggestions in terms of, you know, the path forward. I think you have some of the next steps on, these slides are numbered, but this next steps, like operation, upper, upper, right? Here comes my English language learner, you know. So essentially establishing the process for exemptions, independent study staffing and capacity, enrollment and budget. I think it's really important that we also include a communication plan. We want to over-communicate, you know, throughout this entire process and after, what's available, what we expect from our families, what we are asking them to do, and how to navigate that process. I also want for vaccinations at school sites. We already saw a huge success with the 40 vaccination clinics that we've had so far. And I was able to drop in on quite a few, and I would see entire families coming to this vaccination clinic. So shots in schools, please, is a way to go. We've heard from some of our, you know, partners in the city, they're willing to help out. So, you know, something that was mentioned too, winter is coming. Last year, we saw a huge spike in vaccination, I mean, in COVID rate. And winter is right around the corner, so I'm glad to see that the timeline that was offered in the presentation is before the holiday break. I mean, it's between, I think, Thanksgiving and before Christmas. So that will help in keep our communities safer as they go into the holiday season. I also just, you know, just hope that my colleagues also, you know, support moving in a direction where we just have to do more for our students, for our staff, again, to not disrupt their learning with quarantines, not disrupt, you know, our families, because if there's a quarantine, there's a parent who has to stay home, right? That affects work, employment, and everything. So just really thinking about this from a lens of ensuring that there is continuous education, that there is greater safety in our schools, and in really ensuring that there is equity, especially as we offer, you know, vaccines at school sites. So with that, you know, when the time is right, I would like to make sure that we direct, we give clear direction to the superintendent to come back with a plan, Plan Three, you know, in, before the board, so that we can really, you know, talk about, you know, how we proceed forward with a vote and whatnot at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Member Garcia. I will next go to Member Phillips, then to Student Board Member Zhang. And again, colleagues, if you wish to speak, just click your button. Member Phillips?
Sorry, all I have is that hand.
No, I got you.
Um, so just a couple, I guess, statements and maybe a question. I'm really working with some low-tech today. Sorry. So the status quo, granted, we could do better. I'm more of a proponent of number two, because number three makes me think, if we're going to require vaccination, full vaccination from everyone, that means that our 12 and under, so to speak, group can't participate. So, I mean, it's possible, because I'm thinking, what are we going to do with those who aren't vaccinated? Do we move them to a special program? Because I, I just, three sounds extreme, and I know that I heard one of our, one of our folks talking this evening about what we were going to do with the independent study program if we have a group of students who don't want to be vaccinated, cannot be vaccinated, and still want to go to school. I just, I don't know. I'm struggling with that. And I'm still a proponent for two. Three sounds really just extreme. And I was curious, because Trustee Garcia said it, is what makes sense is that we do vaccinations at all schools. I think we were only doing them at our comprehensive high schools. So since I, you know, there's a couple areas that are in the promise zone, so to speak. They are areas that, you know, have the low socioeconomic and higher transmission rates and higher, you know, higher COVID rates. I wonder if we're doing ourselves a disservice by requiring that people do something that might actually be a true problem for them. So I really, really want us to push out, because I don't have a comprehensive high school, nor do I have a middle school in Area 7. So any thing that we're deciding to do in terms of vaccination, that if we're doing it at the high schools, it's not working. So I'm just really curious as to what we are going to do with those students who are not vaccinated if we do stage three.
And, okay.
Vice President Murawski, I just want to ask Victoria, just for clarity, to explain the similarities between Path Two and Three as it relates to this applying to students that are eligible and non-exempt, so that, again, our board and our community can understand not so much the differences between Two and Three, but the similarities, please.
So, yeah, the similarities would be, we would encourage everyone to get vaccinated. And yes, Trustee Phillips, you know, we can definitely look at pushing out those clinics. We've done some at our smaller elementary schools, had a lot of success over at Pacific Elementary. So the similarities are, we're going to encourage everyone whose age eligible to become vaccinated. That would really be the push. In Pathway Two, the default would be, you know, if you don't make that choice, we'll COVID test you. In Pathway Three, if you have a valid exemption or a valid, you know, reason to not be, which we know we do, we have students in our system right now, then we would COVID test you. Does that get to that, what you were hoping, Superintendent?
And I would just add, I think, as it applies to the And I, I, I would just add, um, I think as it applies to the, the twelve and under who are not eligible for vaccines, for now, they would, they would essentially be the same, right?
Thank you, yes.
So we're not, we're not talking about, you know, having, having people, kids who aren't eligible for vaccines, you know, have some kind of independent study or something. So, so they would just be, you know, business as usual, and we could implement testing, um, uh, for, for that population. But until, until we get a vaccine for that population, they would just be under testing, not, um, wouldn't expect them to be vaccinated.
Correct. That's a really important distinction. Thank you so much for, for calling that out. Yes, everyone who's not eligible right now, they would default to that testing.
So I, I just wonder about the asymptomatic infected children. I mean, what are we doing about that?
So I, I will say, testing is still widely available. And, and whatever decision the board makes, if we decide not to, you know, if you were to decide not to mandate it necessarily for anyone who's vaccinated, we would still make it available. Anyone can test. We're really strongly, you know, pushing testing for, um, people in extracurriculars and, and, you know, band and, um, athletes. And, um, anyone who's had an exposure, even if they're vaccinated, are encouraged, strongly recommended to test. And so that's a lot of the testing that we're currently doing right now.
Okay, so there's not a lot of difference between Two and Three besides the fact that Three is saying that if you are above twelve, you should be vaccinated staff and students. But Two is giving them the option, which can we say that that is relatively as safe as requiring vaccinations from all? I mean, testing and required for those who, who can? So I hope that made sense. It's, it's frustrating because I'm like, we got, we got kids in class, we got some who are sick. We got the ones with the allergies that are coming, noses are running, they're getting sent home from school. So it's just one of those situations where I'm like, Three just sounds too good to be true. And I would hate to wait for a plan for that. If we did number two, we could really institute this a lot sooner. And probably work on our, on our efficacy when we move to Step Three. I mean, I know people don't want it linear, but it's like, sometimes you just got to take a step up. But not climb to the top of the ladder.
I think one of the differences between Two and Three with, with, in speaking about twelve and older, older, and all those that are eligible, is if, if you looked at number three, where you required the vaccine, you would get to herd immunity pretty quickly. You know, doing Option Two, which is a consideration for all of us to hold, um, that might decrease that ability to reach that herd immunity. You know, we, we don't totally know for sure, but if we know, we, we continue to have that testing mandate. Um, you know, we won't necessarily be seeing those vaccine rates go up as much as we would like. Um, so it's just something to take into consideration.
Okay, understood. Thank you. I don't think I have more questions.
Okay. Thanks so much, Member Phillips. Going next to Student Board Member Zhang, and then to Member Villa.
Um, thank you for the presentation. I have some questions and, uh, comments about the dashboard, first of all. Um, I would like to echo what, uh, some parents and teachers have said about the dashboard not being updated, uh, frequently enough. And I do hear that, uh, we, as the district, is working on, uh, some new technology to make sure that it's getting updated. Uh, secondly, I would say that the dashboard is not being publicized enough, uh, throughout the district to parents and also students. I'm sure that a lot of my peers would not, uh, have, would not know about the dashboard. And therefore they are not updated on the status of their own campus. And secondly, um, the dashboard itself, I don't feel like it's enough for us to really navigate what's happening in those campuses. Because, uh, first, we cannot see the details about quarantine or cases. Like where have the students been or the, who they are. And I know that this can involve some privacy, um, information. And this also relates to contact tracing. Um, I think that right now, from what I'm hearing, is that when there has been a close contact, you would be emailed about the information. I don't think that's enough because other students at the campus wouldn't know. For example, if someone went to the cafeteria during lunch, you would try to prevent going into the cafeteria. But if we don't have that information, we cannot do the preventive measures. And secondly, we do not know the quarantine categories from the dashboard. Like, uh, which kind of quarantine the students are on. Which, uh, would be isolation quarantine and also the modified quarantine. And also, we don't know the cases categories. I know that, uh, staff has mentioned that all the cases have been mild. But I would think that it's beneficial to know if someone has contracted COVID, the Delta variant, or other variants. And also one, uh, minor thing is, there, there was a non-school location on the dashboard. And when you click on it, it, it's the Serna Center. And I just thought it was interesting that it was included there. And also, I was wondering where those cases come from. Is it the staff members? I'm, uh, generally a bit confused about that. Um, moving on to testing. I was, uh, I heard that some of my classmates has been exposed to COVID. And the response of the school was to test them. And since my classmate was, uh, negative, she was able to continue to go to school. And my concern is that, uh, immediate testing is inaccurate. Because, uh, persons can be contagious without symptoms and spread the virus to others. And by, uh, quarantine and testing afterwards can reduce the risk that the infected persons might unknowingly transmit the infection to others. And also, according to the CDC site, the incubation period of COVID is two to fourteen days. So the quarantine days of our current, uh, decision forest is ten days. I was also wondering if that is really enough to make sure that COVID is not being spread. And lastly, I would, uh, like, like to talk about contact tracing. Uh, the only thing that was implemented in my school at least is, uh, seating charts. Um, I know that teachers are keeping track of who sits in what seat in order to know who's close contact. But, um, I am concerned about lunchtime because students, uh, students have the freedom to roam around the school freely. And you, you don't know who they are hanging out with, and you don't know what places they have been to. Like what bathrooms, what classrooms. And also, I feel like maybe doing some emails to district-wide or school-site-wide would be helpful for parents and students to know the current status of their campus. And lastly, I would also push for mandating testing. Because as, speaking as a high school student, I don't think, uh, a lot of students would voluntarily test. Like, uh, it's lunchtime, let's go test for COVID. That's a bit weird. So I would say that mandating testing would definitely improve, um, the day, the data that we're seeing currently. Thank you.
Can I address some of your questions? Is that okay? Okay, so I'll try to get them all, but please, please remind me, you know, if I haven't. So, um, some of the information you're asking for on the dashboard, like, we don't, we don't know necessarily what variant that person had. That kind of sequencing happens at the lab. So that's not information that would be shared. But I can say like ninety percent of the variants that are sequenced in our area are Delta. Um, and our Sat County Public Health does have on their dashboard the sequencing of different variants. So we do keep an eye on that. Um, so I think you also had some questions. The non-school location is Serna. Yes, that is correct. And so that's going to reflect employees. Um, it will also be some of our other departments, um, that are centrally located. Um, we, we have to be careful not to give too much identifying information because we are, you know, bound by that confidentiality that you had mentioned. Um, I think you, you had some questions about modified quarantine. So I did want to say that anyone who's on modified quarantine, so they were determined to be a close contact, which means fifteen minutes or more at six feet or less. Um, they are only qualified for modified quarantine if they agree to test at least twice a week. So your point was very valid about how COVID, um, you know, you can be negative now, but you've got that window, right, up to fourteen days where you could, um, potentially come down with an infection. And that's why CDPH requires twice-weekly testing for every student who's on modified quarantine. That third test, if you're still negative, then you can end and test out. But the other protocol that does still stay in place is if you're symptomatic. So if all of a sudden you're symptomatic, you shouldn't be coming to school anyways, right? And then we would want to test you again. Um, so I will say that's been a really helpful, um, we, we've seen, you know, the, the benefits of that kind of, um, continued testing. When the exposure has been in school, we're not seeing, um, that those individuals are testing positive. It's more in those household contacts or community contacts. Um, where someone has to quarantine, and then we're seeing spread throughout a household or a social group. Um, so, and those quarantines have to remain home. Remember, if you have a community, um, exposure, or you have a household exposure, you're not allowed to come to school on modified quarantine. Um, so I think maybe hopefully I got some of that. I know you, I think there was another question about contact tracing, but I might have forgotten it.
Um, the question about contact tracing was, uh, about like, how do you contact trace lunchtime or after-school time?
Yeah, and this is proving, you know, I will just say, this is proving to be a challenge. So our first, um, you know, first outreach is always to the person who tested positive. And there's quite an interview process in talking with them about who they had close contact with, who was in their social group, who do they ride with, right? Maybe, you know, they, they have the same shared transportation to school. I mean, so we try to get as much information as we can from them and reaching out to then some of those additional close contacts. We always talk about confidentiality, right? And, and trying to identify, is there anyone else, uh, as well? So, but, you know, classrooms are proving a little bit more easy when they stick, when they stay in their seats. Um, but it's all those social contacts that are, are difficult. And I would encourage, you know, our students, keep your mask on, um, you know, eat, you know, as you can, but keep your mask on and, and try to have some physical distancing with your friends just to avoid that kind of close contact exposure. I know it's hard. I have two teenagers, so.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Flores, and thank, oh.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I would like to, uh, also comment on quarantine. I just, uh, checked the dashboard just now, and I saw that JFK had a hundred quarantine. And eighty-six of those numbers, uh, happened since school started. And sixty-four is, sixty-four students are currently actively being quarantined. And, um, also NJP has seventy-three quarantine altogether. And I feel like in such a large number of quarantine, um, I know that students will receive a packet for quarantine. But, um, I also think that independent studies should be, uh, developed soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Board Member Zhang, for those, uh, always insightful comments and, and questions. Um, I will ask, um, Member Villa for her comments. Um, I also, I know it's, it's getting late, um, board members, but this is our opportunity to really have a discussion on, on this really critical issue. So I'd also welcome, um, Board Member Wu, Board Member Road. If you, if you can opine, if you can weigh in to discuss, you know, where, where we all are on this issue. Um, I think this is the time to do it. I would appreciate that as well. Um, Member Villa, go ahead.
Um, both of you took a lot of the words out of my mouth, so thank you for sharing your thoughts. Um, I'm just gonna say, I'm really proud of the work that Victoria and her team are doing in our district. I know that from a lot of folks that I've talked to, obviously, we heard that tonight from Dr. Castieri, that Victoria and her team are really being looked at in, uh, their programs, how they implemented throughout the state. So that's something that we should really take a moment and be grateful that we, we have a team in place that is doing amazing work in protecting our community. Um, I thought it was really interesting in the vaccination rates and the zip codes, um, for Area Four. Three out of five had the lowest vaccination eight rates. Um, and the COVID cases via zip codes, Area Four, four out of seven. And so we've seen, obviously, last week, um, what that does and how that can impact our schools. And it's really, um, challenging to think about if we have this many, this, such a central location of these areas and these zip codes, the possibility that schools could close or our students would not be able to attend, um, when they need it the most, especially after the last eighteen months. So, um, I just will keep it short because again, what you're saying, we, we do have a lot, too. So we have things to cover. We have a lot of things to talk. Um, I'm just going to voice my support of Path Three. Um, I think that it's really important that we move together and take leadership in this to protect our staff, our students, our families, our community. Um, I heard this today, um, testing does not prevent COVID. So that's something that we have to really think about, is we can do all of the testing, but it's not going to prevent COVID. Um, vaccines are going to do the work that are going to help our community. So I'm looking forward, I'll keep it short, to what our superintendent staff bring to this board. Um, so we can hopefully get something implemented quickly. Um, because again, it's imperative that our students stay in school, have a safe place. Our community continues to, um, be supported. And it's a trickle-down effect, so we know what this can do if schools start shutting down because we're not taking the efforts that we need to take. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Villa. Um, Vice President Wu.
I'm just, I'm not going to repeat everything that was said before. I agree with everything. Um, I, I will, uh, throw my support behind Measure Three.
Thank you very much. Oh, Member Road?
I was just gonna say that, um, our colleagues have been quite articulate. And the, uh, comments tonight have, uh, been very, uh, on point. I would say I look forward, uh, this is, this is an informational item. I look forward to, uh, Superintendent bringing back, uh, further discussion for our board to take action on, um, in the next, uh, phase. I think we all kind of understand what direction, uh, our community would like us to go to, what direction we would like to go to. Um, so I look forward for Superintendent to come back, um, and we take action on this item. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you all. Thank you all, board members. Um, this has been a really rich discussion. Um, I think you all know where I'm, where I am on this, uh, on this issue. Uh, I think we can't afford not to mandate, uh, our students', uh, vaccinations at this, at this point. Uh, to me, it's, you know, I, I don't come to this easily or quickly. It's after a lot of reflection. Um, you know, there's, there's, uh, there's, there's not that many reasons not to vaccinate. There are a lot of reasons to do it. This is, this is our way out. This is our way out of the pandemic for our school, for our district, for our system, for our kids. We can create a COVID-free island within our school system. That is in our reach right now, at least for, you know, for our twelve and up, right? Um, and as, as soon as, um, as soon as our, you know, age five and over can get vaccinated, that's the vast majority of, uh, of all of our kids. So, you know, we can really do this. It, it sounds like a dream now, almost, but, but it's within our reach. And, um, you know, I, I think it's, it's, it is kind of sad. The broader community, our entire society, is not really doing its part to, um, to really take care of what, what folks need to do to keep our kids safe. Um, if, 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 if we were, we would be in a way better situation with all of this right now. But given where we are and the choices in front of us, um, we have an opportunity to keep our kids safe and keep them in school. We can't afford not to do that. That's, um, that's where I am on this, on this issue. Um, I do, I do recognize the, the considerations that staff has brought forward. They're, they're very valid. So I would suggest, you know, at this point, we, we consider directing staff to, to bring us back a resolution to mandate according to- to mandate according to the schedule that's laid out here, um, of a first shot by, by November twenty-first. There's, um, in addition to the next steps of operationalizing exemptions, um, you know, I would, I would ask, ask that we consider just making this right in line with, um, the normal exemption process that we already have in place for all of our childhood vaccines. And, you know, just as an aside, we have a long, long, rich history of mandating many, many, many vaccines for, uh, for our kids as a condition of school entry, um, in, in the state and across the country. So this is not anything out of the ordinary. In fact, COVID poses a much more clear and present risk to, uh, to the health of our kids. Many of these other, um, many of these other, uh, vaccines or diseases that we, that we do mandate vaccines. So, um, so operationalizing those exemptions, the independent study staffing and capacity, that is a real issue. Um, we, we just, we need to develop that capacity if we need it. I would also like to see, you know, uh, I think shots in schools were mentioned. I, I think that's, that's great. We need to do, uh, all we can, you know, as, as we roll this out to make it as easy as possible for, for our families and, and get them in the door too. Um, do support the, you know, the mandatory weekly testing as far as, you know, as we, as we get into, um, the fall and before, you know, this is going to be, you know, really in place, um, of having everyone vaccinated. I do support the mandated mandatory weekly testing as well. And I think, you know, we're already on that path. I would just like to have to come back, you know, and with a plan and how we're operationalizing that. And finally, I would, I would request we look at, um, using some of our COVID dollars to, to maybe incentivize, um, you know, I don't think it has to be much, but, you know, just kind of make it fun for students. Incentivize getting your shot, you know, your first shot by Halloween or, or whatever it is. Every, you know, student who, who gets it, I don't know, just an idea. Maybe, maybe it's a, a lot to, to throw on top, but I just think, you know, anything we can do to kind of beat up the process of, uh, because the, just the, the quarantine and the exposures and all of the work and time and cost and, and heartache and all of the stuff that that creates is, is, I think it's just worth trying to do this as quickly as possible. So I think, um, I think we're on strong ground of, um, you know, directing, um, staff in that direction. So I think I will, uh, leave it there unless anyone has any comments on, on that. Member Garcia.
I just wanted to make sure that the communication piece was part of that.
Of course, yes.
Thank you.
Very good. So the last thing is, I know, um, I'll send you my notes on here, so. Um, and I, clear communication is, is also part of that.
And Member Phillips just wants to make sure that she's very clear that, that option two is what we might want to consider. So if everyone's gonna go for option three, that's fine, but I would like to at least, um, get comparable information with regard to a plan for two as well. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I think you'd be looking for, I, I think it's along the same lines as in terms of if, you know, if, uh, we talked about potential drop in enrollment or, uh, effect on budget, independent study and that sort of thing. So, yeah, I don't think that should be too much different.
Okay, and also, what's the timeline for this?
Um, you know, I would request that, that we come back, um, before our next board meeting. Um, I, I think it really is a question for, for the superintendent and staff as to, as to how quickly we can operationalize and, and just, and have a plan. Because as soon as, um, I mean, although I feel of a strong sense of urgency around this, we also don't want to rush, we don't want to rush things faster than, um, than we have a plan for.
Yes, um, thank you for the question, um, Member Phillips. Um, I, I was planning to just discuss it and also just make sure that, uh, we are all aligned. Um, that in terms of the next steps, I have the three areas that were already on your, on your slide in addition to, um, special ed considerations that, uh, didn't make it to that last slide, but should have because we actually dedicated time, uh, uh, to that topic. And then communication, the operationalizing of vaccination availability. Um, uh, so that, uh, if, if we were to move forward with this, that we do everything we can, uh, in partnership with other partners so that availability is as seamless as possible. Um, I heard, uh, the idea of maybe something that incentivizes, uh, eligible, uh, students, uh, non-exempt students, eligible students to participate in this or get a vaccine. And then, um, some information about mandated testing capacity, which I think to Member Phillips's point applies to both Path Two and Three. Um, uh, so I think that we would be able to respond, um, on, on both of those paths. Um, I will say that on the mandated testing, we, we will have to bring more information that is, is, is a, a big concern for us in terms of capacity, uh, that the board will have to consider, um, as well as, uh, the independence, that independent study, uh, staffing capacity. We will, of course, huddle very quickly, uh, to look at how we can, uh, expand, uh, that. Um, um, because it, it has been, uh, a challenge to stand that up. Uh, in terms of number three, enrollment budget, again, I, I wanted to be clear that that is just a consideration, um, in that as you start to hear more districts talk about this topic, that probably is going to be an issue that is shared by all of us who are starting to see some enrollment drops. Um, and just the consideration of further enrollment drops. I can imagine that, um, the Sacramento County Office of Ed will want to have a discussion with us as well. Uh, I can, I can sense from our board discussion that you're not, you're not asking that we wait to see what the state does for any of this. Uh, we don't know what the state is going to do. Uh, and certainly any kind of remedy or hold harmless around further enrollment drops that we could provide evidence are, are, are coming from a vaccine mandate. We've not heard any kind of discussion. So this also allows me to interact with other counterparts and figure out if there's any strategy for us to approach policymakers around that. But ultimately, to answer the question, we know that our next board meeting is three Thursdays from, from now. Uh, I would say that, uh, we be allowed to come back, uh, 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 the week before the next, uh, the next board meeting, which is October seventh, uh, at the latest. That gives us, uh, two weeks to do some of this, uh, some of this work, some of this, um, colleagueship networking, if you will. Um, but it would have to be a special board meeting, uh, for the board. Uh, again, uh, the, the, with the week before the seventh, when we return, uh, which would be,
Okay, well, we don't.
That week of August, October, uh, October first, um, Vice President Moros.
Okay, I think we're talking about the week of the.
Or September thirtieth.
September twenty, right, two weeks from today.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at, yes.
Yeah, okay. The week of September twenty, that seems like a reasonable, um.
Yes.
So we can talk about, yep. Thank you, sorry.
Somehow my phone took me to two thousand and nineteen.
That was a nice time.
Yes.
Um, we didn't know how nice it was. So just to be clear, um, all of that is not just information, but coming back with a resolution.
Correct.
So, okay, well, thank you, thank you, board members for the, for the discussion. Thank you so much to, um, to staff, particularly Victoria and her team for the information, um, that, I mean, even preparing, preparing for this presentation is, is a lot of time away from all of the other work that's going on. So we just, we appreciate you so much. Um, you're, as, as was stated, a model for the state, so, and, and all the work you're doing. So, okay, with that, we can move on to, um, item nine point O, communications. Um, Employee Organization Reports, SCTA.
Yes, David Fisher is reporting and we have a comment from Mo Kashmir.
Okay, wonderful. Welcome, David.
I was muted again. You guys hear me okay now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Just said you were host muted. Anyway, um, first of all, appreciate this conversation. I know you guys don't attend bargaining, but, um, you might want to know that weeks ago, we proposed mandatory testing in addition to a vaccination subject to availability, and your team rejected that and, um, just lined it right out. So I'm glad it's going in this direction. We could have had a, uh, more of a head start, but, um, the conversation, um, was good tonight and glad we're finally moving in that direction. I think it's fair to say that, um, Sac City is in a crisis, maybe multiple crisis. And, uh, you know, you're elected and your responsibility is to do something about that. You know that last spring, ninety-six percent of the certificated staff represented by SCTA and ninety-seven point two percent of the classified staff represented by SEIU voted that they have no confidence in superintendent. That vote was clearly reflection on Mr. Aguilar and what students and staff have experienced and continue to experience because of his failed leadership. And since that vote has been taken, it's been demonstrated over and over that no confidence vote was an accurate reflection of the leadership. But now, nearly five months later, that vote also reflects a growing lack of confidence in your leadership as a school board. The superintendent's leadership issues are well-established, but your unwillingness or apparent unwillingness to do anything about it is a breach of your ethical responsibilities to students, parents and staff, and your legal and fiduciary responsibilities as elected public of officers tasked with overseeing a public school system with a six hundred million dollar annual budget. Let's start with that budget. For the ninth time in ten years, Sac City ended twenty twenty-one with a surplus, a surplus of nineteen million dollars. This after the district submitted a twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one original budget that projected a seventy-five million dollar deficit. Aguilar's team were off by ninety-four million dollars in their projections for the past school year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. This repeated surplus, which includes every year since the superintendent stated over and over again to the community that Sac City was only months away from going insolvent. The district's surpluses have been consistent. Unfortunately, so too have been the wildly inaccurate financial projections of the Aguilar administration since he became superintendent in two thousand and seventeen. To repeat, the original twenty twenty-one budget projected a deficit of seventy-five million. Meaning the district projections were off by an unbelievable ninety-four million dollars. And this is an unrestricted funds only. This does not include any of the additional three hundred and thirteen million the district received in COVID funds from the state and federal government. The result of such abysmal financial management not only continues to damage the credibility of Mr. Aguilar and the financial team, but more importantly, it means that students are deprived of the resources that should be spent on them. This spring, for example, Aguilar again issued, and most of you voted for, unnecessary and destructive layoff notices to over one hundred certificated and classified staff, exacerbating the staffing crisis that continues to plague the district. Currently, the district has one hundred and forty-three point eight vacant certificated positions. And this happens every year. Every year we tell you, don't lay them off. You're gonna need them. And every year you just continue to blindly vote to lay them off. Today, the district's unrestricted reserve fund sits at a hundred and three million, the highest in Sac City history. Again, this doesn't include any of the three hundred and thirteen million dollars the district received in the COVID funding from the state and federal government. In fact, since local control funding program was introduced in California in two thousand and twelve, thirteen, Sac City has ended nine of the last ten years with a surplus. The information here is based on district documents that can all be found on the district website under the section related to budgets and financial reports. In two thousand and twelve, thirteen, the surplus was a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Thirteen, fourteen, it was seventeen million. Fourteen, fifteen, it was nine point nine million. And fifteen, sixteen, it was twenty-eight million. And in twenty, and sixteen, seventeen, it was four point seven million. Two thousand and seventeen, eighteen is the lone year that this district actually did experience a deficit, but only because the superintendent cashed out six million dollars in vacation payouts for the top administrators, added a bunch of administrative positions that were unbudgeted and other unbudgeted expenses. In two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, when the superintendent claimed the district was just a few weeks away from fiscal insolvency, the district ran a surplus, paid hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Two hundred and nineteen, twenty, again, another surplus, this time twenty-three point five million. Having a surplus in nine of the last ten years with a net increase of eighty-three point three million to the Sac City unrestricted reserve fund contradicts the claim that Sac City has a quote structural deficit. To have a structural deficit, an entity must actually experience an ongoing recurrent deficit. Sac City has not. In fact, Sac City has a structural surplus. As I mentioned briefly earlier, the district currently has one hundred and forty-three point eight current certificated vacancies, significantly more than the district staff reported to you, this board, at the last meeting. The district also has a massive shortage of substitute teachers. Yet another administrative oversight resulted in more than a hundred or more substitutes being purged from the sub-list for no apparent reason, including some who have been with the district for more than a decade. Other districts, while they're responding to the shortage by raising wages, offering hiring bonuses and actively and aggressively working to recruit and retain staff. Sac City, Mr. Aguilar and the team, with your approval, are demanding huge cuts in teachers' take-home pay, an average of seven hundred and fifty dollars per month per teacher. What responsible employer proposes to cut pay in the middle of a huge staffing shortage? Just one Sac City. Understanding the current crisis facing the district on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, we made a proposal to extend the contract through June twenty twenty-two with a modest pay increase, the same percentage increase, by the way, that this board has approved from Mr. Aguilar every single year. We urged the district to work with us to address the health and safety concerns related to returning to in-person instruction and to work together on a viable plan regarding independent study. Should be noted once again that since last spring, we have been urging Mr. Aguilar and you to create a virtual learning academy to provide a well-thought-out alternative for those students who are unable to return to in-person instruction. Think about what a completely different conversation we'd be having had we gotten started back then like we suggested. Here we are over three weeks later and the district still hasn't responded to our proposal to extend the contract. Even with COVID, uh, breaks occurring throughout the district, the district refuses to engage in our health and safety concerns. And we all know that despite the best efforts of Chad Schweitzer, the independent, um, study program is a mess. Dr. Aguilar refused to attend bargaining and US board have refused to delegate one of your own to sit in bargaining because in the words of school president Christina Pritchett, you have quote, "full confidence," end quote, in your bargaining team. So I just want to describe in the last bargaining session, team, uh, session, what the team that you have full confidence in. So despite the crisis engulfing the district everywhere related to the growing number of COVID cases and the independent study fiasco, the district came into bargaining with no intention to discuss either issue. Instead, the district wanted to discuss how to immediately expand the number of standardized tests throughout the district. We, however, insisted on discussing the staffing shortage, independent study and the COVID outbreak at New Joseph Bonheim and its implications throughout the district. With regard to the staffing shortage, as mentioned, the district refused to provide a response to a proposal to extend the contract, which provide a modest increase that would help recruit and retain staff. And in response to the massive shortage among substitutes, the district gave a proposal that was so bizarre and counterproductive that the district withdrew its own proposal. Additionally, because of the massive shortage of subs, some are reporting that after having taken an assignment to replace a specific teacher, they arrive at the school only to be assigned to multiple combined classes because of the sub shortage. In those cases, no teaching can occur when the substitute assigned supervised seventy to a hundred or more students in an auditorium. Our bargaining also focused on the situation in New Joseph Bonheim. After a long period of time trying to evade our questions, in-house counsel, Raul Bolzio, and Health Services Director Victoria Flores disclosed that the Sacramento County Department of Health had recommended the closure of New Joseph Bonheim due to the COVID outbreak at the small school. While Mr. Aguilar and the other district staff still have not come clean about what exactly happened at New Joseph Bonheim, recently obtained emails provide enough detail to show a lack of transparency and attempt to hide the truth from the community. According to one email from the county health department's Tanner Misano to Victoria Flores dated Thursday, September second, the county, quote, "reviewed the situation as a team and has decided that it would be recommended for New Joseph Bonheim to close for fourteen days from today," end quote. Minutes later, as the email chain establishes, Superintendent Aguilar spoke directly to County Health Director Olivia Casirae right before the beginning of that night's school board meeting. It's not known whether Mr. Aguilar disclosed recommendations in closed session, but the item was not discussed in open session as required by law. It's also a violation to discuss this matter in closed session since health and safety of students and staff are not among the very limited number of items that are permissible discussing closed session. In a conversation with SCTA's executive director on Friday morning, September second, Mr. Aguilar made a point of saying that he would only close the school if the county ordered it, but he would not close it if the county was only recommending rather than requiring it. Why didn't Mr. Aguilar disclose the recommendation? Not only did he fail to disclose the recommendation in the conversation with SCTA on Friday, he failed to disclose it with the New Joseph Bonheim principal's staff during a Zoom meeting on Friday afternoon, September third. The district also did not inform parents of the recommendation of the school, at the school forum Friday evening, September third. After Thursday's bargaining on September ninth, a full week after the county had made its recommendation, school board member Jamie Villa posted on Facebook that the county had not made such a recommendation, a statement that the email proves false. The email suggests. The email suggests either board member Villa had not been informed or she was inaccurate when informing the public. Superintendent Aguilar's job requires him to be transparent, especially when it comes to the health and safety of our students and staff. Regardless of whether one agrees or disagrees with the decision to close the school, the public, particularly the parents and families of New Joseph Bonheim students, had a right to know. For the record, SCTA did not advocate for or against the closure of New Joseph Bonheim. But we have advocated strenuously for full transparency and accountability as well as universal and mandatory testing for all staff and students, just like LA. A proposal, like I mentioned earlier, that the district rejected weeks ago. This deception also calls into account the commitment to equity access and social justice. Why did Mr. Aguilar believe that it was acceptable, or equitable for that matter, to withhold this vital information from students, parents, and staff at New Joseph Bonheim? And now, he's rightfully getting criticized for the lack of transparency. The district's communications department is now putting out statements well after the fact, acting as if they had been open and transparent the whole time. Will this be the leadership crisis that finally prompts the board to act? We hope so. Thank you.
We have a public comment from Mohammed Cashmere.
Mo, if you're there, we cannot hear you.
It looks like he is no longer online.
Okay. Okay, very good. Um, I, I just have a, have a quick comment. I, I just have a, have a request, honestly. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's fine to, you know, hold us accountable. Um, I just really ask that folks uh, just stop attacking our staff, okay, please? It's, it's really not, it's really not okay. Moving on, item ten point O, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. Item ten point O. Twenty, twenty twenty-one Year End Financial Unaudited Actuals and FICMAT Update. Um, this is an action item board. Uh, Ms. Rose Ramos, take it away.
Yes, good evening, board members, superintendent, and members of the public. Uh, tonight, we're presenting to you the twenty twenty-one unaudited actual financial statements, um, which is also known as our year-end financial statements. On the agenda tonight, we're gonna uh, share with you the comparison of the unaudited actuals to the adopted revised budget. Um, also comparing these um, financial statements to the estimated actuals, which was the last time that you saw the estimated actuals for the twenty twenty-one year, which was at budget adoption, June twenty-fourth. And then um, then update on our FICMAT findings. Um, then we'll move into the multi-year projections with the updated beginning fund balance. Um, we'll share some information on the enrollment monitoring and then the summary and next steps, and then we'll seek approval on the financial statements. Presenting with us, with me tonight will be Mr. Jesse Castillo. He is our Director of Accounting Services, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jesse.
Thank you, Rose. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar. This first slide is a comparison of our unaudited actuals to our twenty twenty-one adopted revised budget as of October first, twenty twenty. Um, so essentially, this is a good snapshot of where we started the year versus where we ended the year. And if you look at the three rightmost columns, that will show the changes in each of those categories. Um, and in the unrestricted time, you'll see that we had a net increase of thirty-seven million um, in that ending fund balance, bringing it to a total of a hundred and three point seven million in the unrestricted ending fund balance. Of that, twenty-one point five million was due to expenditure savings due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And we also saw a decrease in our contributions due to one-time savings in the COVID nineteen pandemic as well. Um, the slide is also a great illustration or a great reminder of the importance of revising the budget as we move throughout the year. Um, if you may recall, during our first, second, and third interim reports, we did revise based off of new information that we received or changes in assumptions and also based off of expenditure trend analysis and captured some of those savings as we presented throughout the year. Next slide, please. Slide is a comparison of our unaudited actuals to our estimated actuals, which, as Rose mentioned, were presented at the June twenty-fourth uh, board meeting with, along with the budget adoption. Um, as you can see again, that rightmost three columns shows the comparison and the changes in each of those categories. Um, compared to the estimated actuals, we saw an eight million dollar increase in our unrestricted ending fund balance and for a total again of a hundred and thirty point seven million in unrestricted fund balance. And looking at the restricted side, we see actually a significant decrease of eighty-two point three million in that ending fund balance. And on the next slide, we'll get into the details as to why that occurred. In total, combined ending fund balance, um, decrease of seventy-four point two million, leaving a hundred and twenty-five point nine million combined ending fund balance at the end of the twenty twenty-one uh, actual report. Next slide, please. Slide shows the comparison of our revenues and gets a little more into the details. Um, starting with our unrestricted revenue, we saw an increase of point two three percent from our estimated actuals, so very close in the figures there. Um, in total, our unrestricted state revenues increased by one point seven million due to lottery revenue increase. And we saw a decrease of one million dollars in our local revenue, which is the combination of less revenue received for leases, rentals, and interagency fees. Moving on to the restricted revenue side, which is where we saw our largest change. Um, the first is our restricted federal revenue, which decreased by sixty-three point eight million. And this is due to a change in the revenue recognition for our COVID funding sources. So taking S R two as an example, our total allocation was approximately sixty-eight million. Um, at the time of the estimated actuals were presented, the guidance provided by the California Department of Education was to recognize that full allocation within our budget, within our revenue. And so we had recognized a sixty-eight million dollar allocation. At the time of the unaudited actuals, the guidance has been revised by CDE to recognize only the revenue or the cash that we've received for that particular funded funding source. And in that case, for S R two is a little over as well, it's point six million. So that one funding force alone accounted for about a sixty-two million dollar decrease in our federal revenue recognized in the twenty twenty-one unaudited actuals. Also saw the similar change in revenue recognition for the S R one funds, our gear funds, and our state revenue, state-related COVID revenue for our extraordinary opportunities grant and in-person instruction grant. Well, under the restricted federal revenue category, we saw a ten point eight million dollar decrease in our projected expenses. And this is due to uh, over the projected expenses for our Title I, SIG, other federal programs, as well as special education. Moving on to our state revenue, as I mentioned, we saw a fifteen point four million dollar decrease. And this was again due to that change in revenue recognition for our COVID-related funding sources. And on top of that, we also saw an eight point five million dollar decrease due to expenses coming in lower for after-school programs, pure technical education, and the local forming student block grant. Lastly, we saw our local revenues decreased by about five hundred thousand due to less expenditures in local grants. Next slide, please. This slide looks at the comparison of our unrestricted expenditures compared to our estimated actuals. Uh, we saw an increase here of point five nine percent from our estimated actual, actuals figures. Um, a few of the categories I'd like to draw your attention to, uh, the first being the certificated salaries, which saw a net increase of two point eight million. And this is due to a transfer of psychologist salaries and the related benefits from restricted to unrestricted. And going into the details there, historically, these psychologists-related salaries are expenditure costs or recognized as a supplemental concentration grant expenditure, but they were coded in the budget under special education resource on the restricted side. Um, and then the district with its contribution towards special ed covered those costs um, to have the accounting be cleaner, those expenditures were moved directly to an unrestricted resource um, that were for supplemental concentration grant funds, which also led to, of course, by a decrease of transferred bills. Finishes, how is the special ed resource, lower the contribution and to move that into unrestricted supplemental concentration grant funding sources. We also saw a combined decrease of approximately three million between our books and supplies category and services operating expenses. Um, again, this is primarily due to one-time savings reliance as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And we also saw a decrease of nine point four million in our contributions. Part of this was due to that transfer, as I described above, um, from special ed to unrestricted. With the remaining difference primarily due to one-time savings from the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, lastly, we also saw a one point seven million dollar decrease in our required contribution for the restricted maintenance account. Next slide, please. This slide takes a closer look at our restricted expenditures. Um, our certificated salaries had a net decrease of four point one million, approximately two point four million of that was due to that transfer of the psychologist salaries uh, from restricted to unrestricted. And we also saw a one point two nine million dollar decrease in expenditures for temporary and substitute teacher costs. Uh, moving to our classified scholars, we saw a net decrease of one point two million, of which four hundred thousand is due to COVID-funded salary costs decreasing as well as six hundred and ninety, six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar decrease in temporary and substitute costs. Benefits on an increase of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand due to an increase in the STIRS on behalf amount. Um, and the way that functions is it's required of us, of the school district, to recognize uh, both uh, the revenue and expenditure or the contribution that STIRS makes on behalf of our employees. And so there's a, a revenue line that goes in hand, hand in hand with the expenditure line, those net up to zero. Uh, but there was a slight change from where we were on estimated actuals, and so that's why it shows a net increase of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Look, supplies saw a net decrease of one point four million due to one-time savings related to school closures and distance signing. And we also saw a net decrease of ten point seven million in our services and other operating costs due to those categories listed as well. Lastly, our capital outlay decreased by a hundred eighty-eight thousand due to less COVID-related capital outlay expenditures. Next slide, please. This slide goes over the use of one-time funds and shows how our carryover of one-time funds from our twenty twenty-one unaudited actuals uh, flow into our twenty-one, twenty-two current year budget. Um, as is the unaudited actuals, the district will carry over one point four million in unrestricted supplemental concentration funds. Uh, part of this, part of this was due to uh, orders that just were had delayed due to supply chain fulfillment, uh, things of that nature that didn't have the products received by June thirtieth, and so those amounts are carried over. In addition, the below cable also identifies carryover amounts for restricted programs. So you can see in the left-hand, left-hand side, description of each of those programs. On the right-hand side, the carryover amount for each of those respective programs. In total, a hundred twenty-seven point four million in restricted uh, program funds carried over into the twenty-one, twenty-two budget year. Next slide, please. This slide is an update on our FICMAT fiscal health risk analysis, um, which is conducted back in October twenty eighteen in which they identified sixty deficiencies and provided recommended corrective actions of which thirty have been implemented and thirty, thirty or so in progress. And we do have a more in-depth matrix available on our district website. And it also has been recently reformatted to be more user-friendly. Um, and so again, that's available on our district website. And our next update will be presented with our twenty twenty-one, twenty-two first interim report. Next slide, please. This slide shows our multi-year projections with our updated beginning fund balances um, taken from the twenty twenty-one unaudited actuals report as of the adopted budget. So as you can see, on the second to the last row there, the beginning balance, those are updated to reflect the figures from the unaudited actuals, and you can see how those flow through each of the years of the multi-year projection. Um, you may also note that in the restricted columns for the two out years, that negative restricted balance number, and that is also related to the change in the revenue recognition for our various COVID funding sources, and that will be corrected or adjusted as we move into our next budget update. Uh, as you can also see, um, with the new adjusted starting balance, we do have that deficit spend in each of the three years with the six point seven million in the current year, eighteen point two million in twenty-two, twenty-three, as well as the twenty-four point nine uh, projected deficits spend in that third year out. Please. This slide is again an overview of our multi-year projections, but this is without our COVID-related funding sources. As you can see, there's not much change to the restricted, excuse me, to unrestricted sides, we still have that unaffected uh, deficit spend flowing through each of the uh, three years of the multi-year projections on the multi-year, excuse me, the unaudited actuals ending balance carrying over into a beginning, beginning balance figure, and you see how that flows through as well. Um, for total ending, combined ending fund balance is sixty point one million at the end of that third year out. And with that, I'd like to pass it over to Rose. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. This is pretty much a similar slide to
Ms. Ramos, I'm sorry, if I can
Yes.
Stop you just there for a second. I need a motion to extend the meeting by an hour. Do I have a second? Second, okay. Thanks. All in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Close.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Member Phillips. Please go ahead, Ms. Ramos.
Um, this slide here is a slide that we shared at the August nineteen uh, board meeting. And the purpose of sharing that slide at that time is a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to provide an update on the state enacted budgets, a couple of key items that impacted um, the district's budget. And it was mainly lottery and the um, additional concentration funds that the district stood to gain. Um, but the other important aspect of sharing that information uh, was our enrollment. As I shared in the earlier presentation, we noticed a trend over the summer that our enrollment was not, um, our actual enrollment was not quite up to our projected enrollment. It was um, actually very low compared to um, our actual by about sixteen hundred students. And this was August nineteenth, the sixteen hundred students approximately. So given that over the last few weeks, we've not quite yet hit our target of our projected enrollment. We've seen a fluctuation as high as sixteen hundred under-enrolled um, to as good as about a thousand under-enrolled. Um, and it's kind of varied week by week. So we thought it was important that we, you know, we bring up the slide from August nineteen and then we um, uh, modify it to include the, the revised beginning fund balance, which is actually your ending fund balance from the prior year that we just closed um, to show the impact on our multi-year projections, assuming that our enrollment um, does not materialize and in fact stays under-enrolled at sixteen hundred students. So very quickly, uh, the impact is that, um, that line there, the net increase or decrease in the fund balance is of course that our deficit will increase. And the year we're very concerned about is that third year, because you do have to show, you know, um, positive all through years. And so in that third year for your unrestricted, your, um, the, the deficit does increase to thirty-eight point six million dollars, which then becomes the target for a fiscal recovery plan. So in the previous slide that Jesse had just shared, the deficit, assuming the, assume the, the projected enrollment was about twenty-five million dollars, was twenty-four point nine. Um, but that assumed that the enrollment that we, we projected was going to fulfill itself completely. And we've not, just have not seen the case on that. So it's really important that the board and the public be aware that this is a risk. When will we know where we land? Um, just about this time is the time that we start to finalize enrollment and we report our data to the state in our CalPats numbers. And that happens right around mid-October. So we'll continue to provide updates on how our enrollment is trending over these next few days. And, and actually, we have a couple of weeks left for that one. So, um, next slide, please. And here's just another example of how our enrollment has been fluctuating. This one is a little more positive. This is enrollment as of um, September eighth. And our under-enrolled in total was just a tiny bit over a thousand students. But our enrollment that um, has been trending the last two days has not been as positive. It's been moving back up in the direction of about thirteen to up to as high as sixteen hundred students under-enrolled as of this week. So again, um, once we finalize these numbers, we'll continue to share that update so that the board and the public is aware. And the other important aspect of this, of course, is that um, we don't have a hold harmless provision as of yet. The state hasn't issued anything for next year. So the under-enroll will impact our financials next year, and that's when we have to be concerned about that. So more information to come on that. Uh, next slide, please. So we're getting to the end of the presentation. And again, just to summarize, uh, the surplus that you are seeing as far as the, the savings on the unrestricted side from closing the books is the same that we shared last year. We were closed the majority of the year last year, and we had operational savings. Um, we were not able to project that we were gonna stay closed for as long as we did. We were hopeful this school would reopen, but unfortunately, that was not the case. So when we started the year and we built the budget for the twenty twenty-one, we assumed a full budget year of operational cost at that time. But as Jesse shared, as the year progressed, at each interim reporting period, we did adjust the budget down to reflect at that time what we thought we would need to spend for the remaining year. And then finally, as we got closer to year end, when you adopted the budget, um, you were presented with the estimated actuals, which showed a very close uh, projection to where we actually landed in our actual financial actually landed in our actual financial statements. So next reports will be brought to you that will include all the carryovers that have been posted to the accounts, any other changes from the state enacted budget. We know that there's cleanup language out there still, anything new that may surface, and then we'll of course have the updated restricted ending fund balance, and the cash flow reports will be updated as well. And as always, we'll continue to work on identifying solutions to achieve that fiscal solvency. Next slide, please. And with this, we're going to move it into questions, and then finally, approval of the un-ordered financial statements. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Ms. Ramos. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do have public comment from Mo Kashmiri.
Mo, if you're speaking, we cannot hear you. Okay. Well, is that all the public comment we had?
Yes. Yes, that was the only public comment.
Okay. Okay. Happy to receive your comments in writing, of course. So with that, board, this is an action item. Do we have any board comments or questions? Okay. I know we're all cognizant of keeping our staff here late, so would ask that we try to be brief. Member Garcia.
I will. I will be brief. Thank you, Rosen team, for the presentation. I just had very, I think, just clarifying questions. On all of the restricted programs, all the carryover amounts, I know that they're being carried over because we were closed for most of the year. Are we returning any of those amounts? I know some of the carry, I know some, some of these fund or programs have a cap as to how much you can carry over. So just trying to understand if, if the flexibilities to be able to carry over the entire amount are still in place, or if the caps are now in place, so that means you have to return some of the funds? Can you just clarify that?
Absolutely. We do know that on, not the COVID relief funds, those have different dates, but we just received some information, as a matter of fact, earlier today about some of the other federal sources, our titles primarily, our federal sources, and those categories that that flexibility will still apply, and I just can't recall off the top of my head if it was another like 15 months or 12 months that we were given. But we will certainly provide you with that update. But yes, there is already some provision out there to, to increase that cap and to extend that, that spend by date as well.
Okay, that's good to hear. I'm thinking in particular about our Title I schools. Those are critical funds that have a huge impact at the school site level. And then I had a question about, it's on the, on the actual agenda packet, it's the, on the contributions that came in lower than projected for the special ed. I think it's the transfer of the psychologist from the special ed fund to, to supplemental and concentration. Is that going to be a permanent transfer, meaning that now they're, they're going to come out of supplemental and concentration on an ongoing basis?
That's correct. That was a correction, Member Garcia. That's a very good question. They should have always been applied to supplemental concentration. And as we're going through these accounts and we're discovering some inconsistencies, we're correcting those. And that was discovered in, again, we're trying to make sure that our LCAP is supposed to be totally tied to our budget. That wording was there, but the transaction had not happened. And so this last year, staff worked to clean that up. And so that, that will be an ongoing unless, you know, there's, there's a difference or a change in the LCAP itself. And Jesse, please, if there's some more details that you want to add to that.
I think you covered her well. Thank you.
And just two, two quick questions. So on the Child Development Fund, I know that the unrestricted general fund would backfill for about $550,000, and I think that was in the budget that we adopted. I think that was on a one-time basis, so I just wanted to make sure that the Child Development Program is still part of the conversation in terms of, like, a longer-term conversation and a bigger conversation about early childhood education, and then figuring out how this particular program fits into that larger conversation. So can you confirm, did we just, I guess, fund that program on a one-time basis pending this, this conversation as part of the fiscal recovery plan?
Yes, we, we made a contribution this last year. It was in the budget. And for this coming year, I believe, and Jesse, jump in here if I get this wrong, but I believe that we used, utilize some of our one-time COVID relief dollars, because that program was not able to generate the fees that it should have generated. In addition to that, they also received their separate pot of COVID relief dollars that shouldn't, you know, close that gap this year, but you know, we've just started this year, so it's kind of a wait and see. We'll know by first interim how they're, you know, they're, yeah, they're operating.
Okay, well, that's good to know. And just a comment slash request, the FICMAT sort of matrix or report, it was one of the first things that I heard about when I got sworn in, all the FICMAT like findings and all of that. So, and I know that you've been reporting back on progress. Some of the, the recommendations are still in progress, other ones have been completed. I am going to request that at some point, we hear like a more comprehensive, I think, presentation that, because I feel like there's so many reports that we hear back from, but I, I'm starting to lose sight as how they all connect. One of them, on the fiscal side, it's the, it's FICMAT report, it's also the State Auditor Report, right, that came in after FICMAT. SCOE also gives us reports and input and feedback. So we have that on the fiscal side. And then on the programmatic side, we have the CCEE Report for Special Education, we have the Suspension Report for disproportionate suspensions for African-Americans, and then we have all these plans that are tied to funding, right? We have the multiple versions of the LCAPs, and other ones coming, I think, next year. The ELO Plans, the ESTER Plans, the ARP Plan. I think there are about eight plans that staff has worked on this past year. So I'm just trying to put all of this together, how the funds connect to the programs, and the superintendent, I don't know when we can, we can have this conversation at the, at the board level, because there are just so many things happening that I don't want to lose sight of what, how much progress, you know, the district has made, but how much longer we still have to go. And then it, it goes back to that one slide that Rose, thank you for including it again, that still shows that our budget, we still have work to do on our budget with our unrestricted general fund on an ongoing basis, that without these one-time funds, our budget isn't healthy. And right now, we're just, you know, for lack of a better word, I mean, I feel like we're drunk with money, but it doesn't mean that we're okay. So, so superintendent, if you could just make some comments about all these-
Yeah.
-all these reports on the fiscal side, on the program side, and then all these plans, and then that's the final question.
Yeah. What, what I'd like to propose, Member Garcia, is just a reminder to the board and to our community that we are, at the moment, the, the initial fiscal FICMAT report was some time ago, 2018 or so. That matrix is still one that we're operating and monitoring, and since then, of course, you know that we had the State Auditor as well come up with recommendations on, on the fiscal side. And then on the programmatic side, as I've mentioned, we have several reports. We have the Council of Great City Schools Report of 2017, we have the CCEE SER Report as well. So we have been working on figuring out how all of these reports intersect. We know that we can't focus, for example, on all 70-plus recommendations from the CCE SER, and I'd like to come back to the, to the FICMAT matrix as well, and, and give a full, a more full description to the board and to our community of what are those watershed recommendations, what are the most critical ones that we have been focused on, and why is it that we're focusing on those, and why is it that we're monitoring those more closely than others in terms of starting the recommendations or making sure that they're in progress? What I'd like to propose is that we provide an update to the board on those two areas, the programmatic and the fiscal, and be much clearer about the recommendations from the FICMAT, from the State Auditor, State Audit Report, that we are, that we believe we should be focused on to try to address the slides that you mentioned, Member Garcia, so that the board and our community can better understand what it's going to take in those recommendations, and why we're choosing the recommendations to try to address the bottom line, which is that those, the, the, the multi-year projection is what we have to address I just sent an email. We will discuss this as a team on Tuesday, and then just make sure that it's in our board planner. I'll want to make sure that I talk to Rose about whether it makes sense to bring this back as we bring the first interim period report in December or before.
Thank you. Very well taken, Member Garcia. I, I would echo it, and would request we look at kind of that, that programmatic piece to see if we can do that sooner, because I think it's really important for us to have our head around what, you know, what metrics we're working on, what, what we're trying to do with all these plans as we go into this school year more fully. So with that, that is an action item. Board members. Sorry? Oh, Member Wu? Oh. Okay, I have a motion. And a second. Student preferential vote? Okay, Superintendent, please call the roll.
Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Abstain.
Okay. Thank you very much, board members. And thank you very much to staff, and apologize for the late hour. Item 10.2, Bond Oversight Committee Measures Q and R Annual Report. And I believe that's back to Rose Ramos again.
Yes, and just very briefly, I'm just going to introduce Mr. Michael Watanabe, the Chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for the District, and he is going to present the annual report.
Okay, and just as you begin, Mr. Watanabe, thank you very much for, for your service, and thanks to all the, all the members of this committee for this important oversight. It's required, it's necessary in addition to that, and I just really, really thank you for putting in the time to make sure we're on track, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So good, good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar. I am joined tonight by Terrence Glandy, one of the members of the Bond Oversight Committee, and Marsha Fritz and Colleen were here, but I think they had to leave, but they are here as well, joining me. The first slide you have there, just a reminder, this is its core values and guiding principles. I'm sure you've seen it, so I won't spend any time on that. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, education code requires school districts that create a bond oversight committee when you're passing bonds under the authority of Proposition 39, that lowered the bond, local bond passage rate from a 2/3rd vote to 55% vote. The role of the committee is to ensure the proper expenditure of bond funds by reviewing the financial and performance audits, and then other school district documentation that you guys provide to us. We verify that no teacher or administrative salaries are expended with bond funds, and we also review the district's cost-saving measures of those bond funds. Next slide. This is our current membership right now of the board, or this was our membership for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. Statute requires seven members. Of those seven members, at least one member has to be a member of a business organization, one member has to be a member of a senior citizen organization, one member has to be a member of a taxpayer organization, one parent member, and one parent member who's also a member of their school PTO. At the moment, for our 2122, we only have six members, so we could use the district's help in recruiting additional members to the committee. We need to recruit one member of a business organization coming up soon, one member of a senior citizen organization, and one member of a community at large. Next spring, a couple of us will term out, so we'll also need a parent PTO member. Next slide. The committee, once again, would like to thank all the district staff that provide support to the committee. The district staff are extremely knowledgeable in the status of the district's projects and the latest cash flow of the bond proceeds, and they continue to be responsive and patient with all of the committee's questions, so we'd like to thank them for all their help in writing us the documents we need. Next slide. Since our last update, we've conducted three more meetings. Our May 6 meeting was canceled as a result of the pandemic. We continue to review reports at each month from the district's accounting records and the accounting team, and they provide us an update on the status of bond sales and the drawdown of those funds. We were able to do one site tour before the pandemic. We toured West Campus' new science wing back in February 2020. And as the pandemic hopefully loosens up, we hope to do future site tours of some of the projects we'll show you on the next few slides. In addition to our bond oversight committees, several of our members participate in the district's facility master plan meetings, and also the educational specification meetings as well. Next slide. This is one of the district's projects that we reviewed at the Luther Bear Bank High School. I believe this is the core academic renovation project. Next slide. This is the admin wing at Kennedy High School. And then, next slide, and then lastly, the central kitchen project. And we're all very excited to tour that one, because we toured the old building before the teardown, so we are interested in seeing the finished projects. Next slide, please. So here are the audit findings and conclusions for Measure Q. For the first time, the independent auditor has made an audit finding at the conclusion of the audit. More specifically, the auditor found that the reconciliations of cash in the county treasury were not being prepared, reviewed, and approved on a monthly basis. That is a statement noted in the, in the audit itself. I would note, the auditor did not specify how many months were not approved timely. It could have just occurred once to indicate that finding, but generally speaking, the following months' reconciliations would catch the accounting records back up. As a corrective action is, I understand the district has already implemented stronger internal controls and added additional layer review and approval for that process. At the end result, though, the district was found to have expended all the Measure Q bond funds in accordance with the requirements of Proposition 39. Copies, full copies of those statements, those audit reports, are available on the Bond Oversight Committee's website on suse.edu. Next slide. These are the audits, the findings, and conclusions. One more slide. Yeah, there you go. These are the audit findings, conclusions for Measure R, and a mere Measure Q findings as well. And just like Measure Q, all funds were found to be expended in accordance with the requirements of Proposition 39. Next slide. And just a reminder, all of the Bond Oversight Committee documents they review, meeting minutes, agendas are available on the district's website for the Bond Oversight Committee. And that is it. I'll field any questions you guys may have.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much again, and thank you for your service. We really appreciate it. I know you've been a longstanding member of the committee, as are, as are many of the members. With that, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have four public comments. And we have Mohammed Kashmiri has requested to speak. And we have Mohammed Kashmiri has requested to speak. If you're there, Mr. Kashmiri, please unmute yourself. It looks like he's away from his computer, maybe. Our next speaker is Sarah Colegrove.
Hi, thank you. I have two children in the district. My oldest is a junior at John Up Kennedy. First, I want to thank you for opening schools. I want to thank you for the onsite COVID testing we have, and I want to thank you for our school policies. But today, I'm here to bring to your attention a safety issue concerning the baseball and softball fields at Kennedy High School. Over the last week, many people involved in decision-making of school projects and charged with the safety of our children have come to walk our baseball fields to see firsthand the damage done from unchecked gopher digging, lack of maintenance, and no protective fencing. District officials are aware of the issues I am asking to be addressed. Our field conditions are unsafe. The grooves and channels to gophers have made the outfield a very dangerous place to play ball, a problem that will only be more extensive after the rains come and the abandoned tunnels collapse. This is not something we can just put a Band-Aid on. Any baseball or softball player running to catch an outfield ball is at high risk for a major injury. Any student of Kennedy High School that's just walking the field or playing or running is at risk for a major injury. And any community member that's walking their dog on this field is also at risk for a major injury. The consequences of not moving forward with field work are many. To start, our children would not have a home field to play on and would thus have to rent at an additional cost to the district, an off-site field. This would put a great burden on players that do not have reliable transportation. Second, if the district does not act and our fields are left in disrepair, students may be injured, and the district and the school will be left open to possible litigation. Third, your students of Kennedy will continue to feel underserved and undervalued. I don't think it's a great surprise to you that just down the road, five miles, McFlanchy High School has a beautiful new football, soccer, and track facility and a baseball field that has a new fence. Burbank has a new baseball field, and Johnson is starting the process to get a new field as well. We're asking for safety, and we're asking for equity. The parents and students of Kennedy are asking you to address the safety issue now, not later, not after the new year. We're asking that you fast-track all permits and funding so that the work on the baseball and softball fields can begin in a timely manner, and the students of Kennedy can start the spring season playing on a safe home field. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Stan.
The other speakers are not online, so that was the final speaker.
Okay, very good. Well, this is an information item, Board members. Do we have any any questions or comments from Board members? Okay, seeing none. Again, inform, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just just very briefly on, you know, at some point, I know I've requested this in the past, I just want to, you know, you know, say it out loud again, just really getting a report back on what funds are available for both of these measures, Q and R. And I know that's that's coming at a later time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we will
Excuse, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Terrence Gladney is had requested to speak.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead. Go right ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, everybody. I'll try to not take the full two minutes. As a Bond Oversight Committee member, I do want to thank Michael and the rest of my fellow colleagues on the committee for always challenging my thinking. I've learned so much, especially from Michael and Leslie, because they do work for the state, you know, in and around facilities. So I've learned more about statutes and policies. But collectively, most of our questions probably do fall technically outside the purview of what statute says. And I appreciate that because we do have, you know, Nathaniel and Crystal and Anna, who are responsive to pulling data. So just for you guys' awareness, statutorily, I mean, we we meet and we do review the expenditures every month, but the audit that comes to you guys every year, we don't do that work. Again, it is an independent auditor. So the work is, you know, statutorily required, we look at those reports that aren't our work. But a good portion of those questions and the work and the conversations we have just give us additional insight into what's happening on our school campuses around equity. And being on this committee has provided opportunities for me to fulfill additional desire to dig a little bit deeper, including work on the facilities, master planning core committee. And and through that work, we're able to more in-depth discuss equity. I don't know that I'm excited about the responses come from you guys as board members around that work. But it's a start. I do know that you guys can do a lot more and maybe actually just acknowledge that the work that was done was community-driven, and there were multiple Bond Oversight Committee members on that body, as well as from other district committees such as CAC, you know, African American Advisory Board, you know, multiple stakeholder groups that represent you guys on the actual ground and are close to the ground. So, you know, just I I just ask you guys to be a little bit more courteous with your responses and and just more aware of where these conversations and voices and and suggestions are actually coming from because they are coming from the ground that you guys represent. So again, thank you to my fellow committee members and staff that supports us in this work. And and, you know, I look forward to continuing in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Terrence, and thank you for your for your hard work on this committee and and on many other committees and on behalf of our kids. Okay, with that, Board, this is an information item. We will go on to eleven point O. A couple of the of quick action items to get through. We have plenty of time. But we don't need to take it all. Eleven point one, public hearing. This is our second reading and action for our revised board policy on district records. Mr. Lyons and Mr. Bozio.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Aguilar. So this is the second reading of revised board policy thirty-five eighty. Next slide, please. State and federal law require that the district provides secure storage, retrieval, archiving, and destruction of district documents. Since this board policy has not been updated since two thousand and one, the majority of changes revolve around electronically stored information. Next slide, please. This policy revision also addresses the district's document management system and includes security breaches, document storage, and how district records are retrieved, archived, and disposed of in accordance to law. Next slide, please. The proposed revisions to board policy thirty-five eighty are based on the updates provided by the California School Boards Association. These provisions include a data breach notification process and ensuring that employees receive information about the district's document management system. Next slide, please. Are there any questions or comments regarding this revision?
Okay, I don't believe we have any public comment on this item. Okay. Well, again, we appreciate you bringing this forward. Do we have any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, this is an action item. I would take a motion to approve. Motion in a second. Student preferential vote? Okay, Superintendent, can you please call the roll?
Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much for for bringing this forward to us.
Thank you.
Okay, eleven point two, public hearing. Resolution of intention to convey utility easement entitlement to the Sacramento Municipal Utilities District for Transportation Services. Mr. Browning, welcome. Oh, you're on mute. Had to happen at least once.
Thank you. So good evening, Board members and Superintendent. I'm Nathaniel Browning, and I'm here to present this public hearing item that outlines district's intent to convey a public utilities easement to the Sacramento Municipal Utilities District. The easement is needed so SMUD can provide public utilities to electric bus charging infrastructure at the district's transportation facility. This item is a conference action item, and there's also a consent agenda resolution on tonight's agenda as well. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, and right. It's on the All right, and this, so we have no public comment on that on this item. Am I correct? Okay, thank you. And any board comments or questions on this? Okay, thank you. I need a second to move us from conference to action. Okay, do we need a roll call vote on, okay, all those in favor of moving to action, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll do the roll call vote. Student preferential vote? Thank you, Superintendent.
Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Wu. Member Garcia. Member Villa. Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, twelve point O. This is an action item. We did have a request to speak. I'm not sure if anyone's on the line for public comment at this time.
Yes, Terrence Gladney wanted to speak on item twelve point one A.
Okay, very good. Go right ahead.
I forgot my comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That concludes our business. Almost thirteen point O, business member.
I'm sorry. Do you need to vote on the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda. Thank you very much. I will take a student preferential, student preferential vote.
Yes, on all open session items.
Okay, thank you very much. Roll call.
Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. Thirteen point O, Business and Financial Information. Receiving the information listed. Fourteen point O, Future Board Meeting Dates and Locations. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is in three weeks, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, at four thirty, closed session. Six o'clock, open session. The next one after that, October twenty-first, four thirty, closed session, six o'clock, open session. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thanks.